If everybody could take a seat, please, that would be great. We're going to get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Westwood's Town Meeting. It's 6:00. We're going to do the preliminaries. We do have a quorum, but we cannot start the official meeting until 6:30. Just want to have everybody keep in mind that we come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than the Commonwealth itself. We come together to make decisions about our community, and as we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right," and that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. Let us always remember that, in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. And tomorrow, the people you're sitting with are still going to be your neighbor. So now, we're going to turn it over to Rob Gotti.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, and welcome, everyone, to Westwood's 2025 Annual Town Meeting. As has become tradition, we begin by honoring one of the very best among us with the John J. Cronin Public Service Award, Westwood's highest honor to an individual who has demonstrated remarkable service to the community. John J. Cronin, a longtime treasurer for the town, generously dedicated his time and expertise to the betterment of the community, both as an elected official and through countless volunteer efforts. To recognize the spirit of community involvement illustrative of John J. Cronin's life, we are proud to announce Harry E. Wells as the 23rd recipient of the John J. Cronin Service Award. We unfortunately lost Skip last week. I know he was really trying to be here, but I was able to visit with him at Beth Israel prior to his passing, so he did know that he had been selected as this year's honoree. Here today to accept this award on his behalf are his daughter Jill and his son Chip. We'll have you guys come up here in a moment. I just want to reflect a little bit on Skip's contributions to the community. I had the honor this morning of meeting Skip's brothers, Richard and Tom, and sharing the declaration with them and swapping stories. So, yes, any of you who are sporting a Skip-like wry smile, you are correct. Skip and his brothers were quite literally Tom, Dick, and Harry. Now, Jim Henson, who you also may remember as the creative vision behind the Muppets, he once said, "There's not a word yet for old friends who've just met." That's exactly how I, and I suspect many of you, felt about Skip. I was drawn to him upon our first meeting by his intellectual curiosity, his boundless optimism, and his creative problem-solving. I was so impressed that I asked him if he'd be willing to serve on the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, which is about to be reformed. He looked at me with that impish grin, and he said, "Rob, I'm 83 years old. At my age, I don't buy green bananas." He said, "How long's the term?" And I said, "Three years." He said, "I'm game if you are." Skip was deeply committed to civic engagement, dedicating his time and his expertise to a wide range of activities, municipal boards, and committees. His service included key roles on the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, the Finance and Warrant Commission, the Capital Committee, and the Westwood Community Chest. He also served as a baseball and softball coach while Chip and Jill were growing up, often taking them out to catch pop-ups over the wire down on Phillips Brook Drive before it got too dark. Now, professionally, Harry was a Wall Street analyst, director of research, and a hedge fund manager. Now, that boundless optimism I mentioned earlier, Skip owned that. Jill shared with me his business card, which simply listed his title as "Data-Driven Optimist." Beyond his work in town government, Skip made a significant impact through his dedication to the Home for Little Wanderers, where he served as board member, chairman of the board, and under his leadership, the organization doubled its endowment and quadrupled in size. For over 25 years, he hosted the Wells Cup Charity Golf Tournament, raising over $6 million for the home. But for him, it was more than just fundraising. He would often take a bunch of his buddies, and they'd go down to play ball with the kids on the farm to help ensure they had positive role models in their lives. Skip was also involved with Mass Bay Community College because he wanted to support and encourage paths to honorable careers in essential tradecraft. A Westwood resident for over 50 years, Harry and his late wife Joan raised two children, Chip and Jill, and he's a proud grandfather to Harry, Bradley, and Benjamin. Skip and Joan were members of St. John's Episcopal Church, where, of course, Skip had to be involved. He was also served as vestry there. Soon after Joan passed, Skip moved to Fox Hill Village, where he and his companion Laura remained very active. Jill shared one of her dad's favorite questions that reflected his optimism. He would often say, "What if..." Well, if I may pick up on Skip's own language of enthusiasm for life and optimistic outlook, wouldn't it be great if there were more Skip Wellses in this world? I sure think there would. So, now, thank you. So now, before we present Jill and Chip with this award, I have one little housekeeping item. You guys over here, I've attended many, many basketball games, and I know this is the sort of guest section, so we have a very important responsibility for you. There have been many exciting basketball games. This is the student section, known as the "den," which means they are the loudest people in the room, so you have to keep that in mind in a moment. So, John, would you come up here, please, John Cronin? Chip, would you and Jill, please, join us? On behalf of the John J. Cronin Public Service Award Committee, it is with great pleasure that we present this prestigious award posthumously to Harry Skip Wells and add his name to the plaque displayed in Town Hall, listing all previously honored individuals. Please stand, if you're able, and join me in a rousing round of applause, loud enough for Skip to hear. I believe Jill is going to bless us with a few Skipisms.
On behalf of my family, I'd like to say thank you. Westwood meant so much to my dad and our family. This is a great place to be. It was a great place back then, and it still is an amazing place now. I was asked to share some Skipisms. I wasn't quite sure which one to pick. There's quite a variety. So, my final thought would be, peace be with you and your putter. Thank you.
I really want to thank everybody who brought this meeting together. It takes a lot of hard work, and at the risk of leaving somebody out, I'm going to try to recognize some people. I'd like to thank Tom Clark, Dottie Powers and her staff, Pam Brooke, and especially Patty Camo, because without her, we can't vote. The Finance and Warrant Commission, and Allison McCarthy, the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the School Committee. Town Administrator's Office, Chris Coleman, Tish Shealy, Molly Fitzpatrick, Amanda Wolfe, and Laura Hayes. Tonight's presenters, we have Stephanie McManus, Fire Chief Steve Lund, Paul Fitzgerald, Nancy Hyde, Ellen Larkin Rollins, and perhaps Nora Lockname. The facility staff in setting up the auditorium for this evening, they did a great job. Melinda Garfield, Charlotte Lynch, and Evan from the Westwood Media Center. Town Council, Pat Ahern. Assistant Town Moderators, Paul Fitzgerald and Mary Macy Phelps. The National Honor Society students from the high school who are babysitting for free this evening, so some of you can attend. We have microphone runners, Julia Drainville, Mia Chaffee, Hunter Gostie, Leila Shanshara, Mike Nasser, and Marie O'Sullivan. And the Westwood Police Department, tonight, we have Bill Sheehan, Kathy McCarron, and Mark Rinlett. And there is a provision in Town Meeting Time that if anyone's disruptive, I have the authority to have them escorted from the room by the Westwood Police. We hope we won't come to that. I just want to make sure we all behave tonight. Now, we're going to turn over the microphone to Dottie Powers, and she's going to swear in the newly-elected officials.
Good evening. Congratulations to all who were elected to Town Offices at the Annual Town Election held on Tuesday, April 29. At this time, I would like our newly-elected officials to stand when your name is called and to be recognized, given the oath of office. Christopher McEwen, Office of Assessor. Christine Prevett Terra, Office of Housing Authority. Paul Fitzgerald, Office of Library Trustee. Tina Bronkhorst, Officer of Library Trustee. James O'Sullivan, Office of Town Moderator. Marian Collins White, Office of Planning Board. Michael Duderian, Office of Planning Board. Anthony Tony Mullin, Office of School Committee. Dorothy Dory Parmalay, Office of School Committee. Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings, Office of Select Board. David Kromsiak, Office of Sewer Commission. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully, according to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform the duties of the office in which I was elected to, in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Westwood and the laws of the Commonwealth. Thank you for your time and commitment to the Westwood community. Let's give our newly-elected officials a round of applause. Thank you. And if I can just ask all of the newly-elected officials, if I haven't seen you, to sign your oath slip, please see me before a town meeting ends. Thank you.
At this time, we take a minute to recognize those town officials who passed away in the last year. The only one we're aware of is Skip Wells, so we'll have a moment of silence for Skip, please. Thank you. We cannot officially start the meeting until 6:30. I don't know if the Girl Scouts are here. Okay, if the Girl Scouts wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, they can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a troop of one, John? Okay, I think Fiona Donahue has come away for her as well. Do you want to get into the voting devices? All right, let's get on to the tutorial on the devoting devices, and you can take a seat right here.
Okay, we ready to have a little fun before the meeting starts? See, we're moving ahead. We're moving away from our schedule, so hang on a second. So basically, let me just talk about... So everybody knows the visitor's section is over here to your right, and accessible seating is outside along the rows. If there's anybody that needs any assistance at any point during the evening, please let us know. And if anybody needs any hearing devices, we do have them available at the registration area. Okay, so now, we're going to get into the electronic voting information. Each registered voter received an easy voter keypad check-in upon check-in. This little thing right here? Oh, I'll do that myself. Here we go, sorry about that. The keypads use reliable radio frequency and are secure. If you're asked to vote electronically, please select either yes or no. So look at your device. Nothing's going to happen right now, because there's no vote open, but yes is 1A and no is 2B. Please do not take the keypad with you when you exit. Please remember, please return the keypad to a staff member that are located at the exit doors. To vote, what you do is you press the button with the number that corresponds with the vote you wish to cast, as I just explained, 1A, yes, and 2B, no. You'll have 20 seconds to cast your vote. The vote will be submitted, sent automatically, and confirmed by showing "okay" on the screen pad after each vote. There's no need to press send. When the vote is counted, only respond when the vote is open. "Okay" will appear on the keypad display confirming receipt of the vote. If you're not sure, vote again during the 20-second allotment until the voting for that article is closed. You may correct your previous vote, but only your last vote counts. Recorded results will appear on the large overhead screen. So now, we're going to have a little fun. We're going to have a few test questions. We're going to... The first question, the test question, is this your first Westwood Annual Town Meeting? So it's time to vote. Again, press 1A for yes and press 2B for no. So you see the timer? Each vote is going to be 20 seconds. Okay, so vote is closed. So we just saw that. I believe 123 was yes, and can you just move that? And 175 was no. So are there 298 people in this room? Did everybody vote? Okay, so now, we're going to try another one. True or False: Coca-Cola was the first major drink in the United States. Time to vote. Using your keypad, again, press 1A for true, 2B for false. Come on now, everybody vote. Okay, your vote is closed. Just a little technical difficulty. We'll get it. That's why we're practicing. Okay, look at our numbers. 137, yes, and 181, no. 298, so that's good. Everybody voted again. And so those who said no, you were right. Guess what it was? Does anybody know? Anybody? Do you know what the first drink was? Dr. Pepper. And that's it. So let me ask, does everybody feel comfortable with your device? No? Why do I hear no in the back? Excuse me? It didn't say okay? It didn't register? Okay, so we'll have our registrar, John Cummings, take a look at that. Anybody else have a problem with theirs? Okay, so if you have a problem with it, our registrars are in the back. What they will do is they will look at it, and they will swap it out. You'll have to give them the one you have, and they will give you a new one. We take very good control of these. These are very secure, so we're not just handing them out to handout. Thank you.
All right, we're now ready for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Fiona and Kimberly are going to introduce themselves, and she's going to lead us all, so ask everybody to rise, please.
Hello, my name is Kimberly.
Hello, my name's Fiona.
Today, we're going to sing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, girls. Did a great job. It's still not quite 6:30, but I'm going to go through the rules of Town Meeting. When you speak, we have two microphones, one over here in the aisle to your right and one in the middle. You need to give your name and your street address. Town bylaw restricts using personalities, so you cannot talk about personal characteristics of anyone to speak in favor or against an article. So you can't get up and say, "I'm voting against this article because Jim O'Sullivan supports it, and he's a lawyer. I will rule that out of order." Limit your discussion to the issue, the article that we're discussing. All remarks must come to the chair, to the podium, so you can't speak to people across the room. You have to speak to me for your remarks. There was a longtime moderator in the hunt, Dave Cullen, and he shared a story with us recently with the Mass Moderators Association. He was moderating a town meeting, and a Select Board member handed him a note and said, "Dave XYZ." He didn't know what it meant, and someone said, "Examine your zipper." It's advice we could all use. There is something called reconsideration. When we vote on an issue, and the vote is final, it can be reconsidered once. It can only be made on the same night, tonight, and it requires a two-thirds vote. I'm going to ask everybody to be respectful. Do not comment as other people speak. Do not criticize. Do not boo. Do not clap. You're not allowed to videotape people as they speak. The meeting's being recorded by Westwood Media Center. Standing up and holding a cellphone and videoing someone as they're speaking is very intimidating, so I'm going to rule that out of order. I'd like some preliminary motions. Would someone like to move that we waive the reading of the warrant? Is there a second? All in favor of the waiver of the reading of the warrant, please say aye. Oppose, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Would someone like to move to waive the reading of the articles? Is there a second? All in favor of the waiver of the reading of the articles, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. I'd like a motion to permit non-resident town employees to address town meeting on particular aspects of a particular article. We need town meetings approval to do that. Someone willing to make that motion? Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It is a vote in favor. I'd like a motion that we conclude by 10:45. I got a lot of faith in you people. I think we're going to be done tonight, but in the rare occasion we're not done tonight, we're supposed to finish by 10:40, 10:45. But I'd like you to give me the discretion to stretch that out an additional half an hour if I think we conclude in one night. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. If we have to go on to another meeting, we're going to meet in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday evening at 6:30. Town Meeting is Westwood's legislative body. It's a parliamentary proceeding. It is older than the Commonwealth itself. According to Town Meeting Time, it's a uniquely New England phenomenon, but if you ever saw the movie with Gene Hackman called Hoosiers, they have a town meeting in that movie. But I'm telling you right now, we're not going to use Town Meeting to fire the basketball coach of the high school. Town Meeting is governed by Massachusetts General Laws, the Westwood Charter, the Westwood Bylaws, and something called Town Meeting Time. It's a book put up by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. You can purchase it. They now have an online version, a digital version. But if there's a question, I'm going to rely on these four sources. Like the first four votes we just did, if I think the vote is going to be quicker by a voice vote, I'll take a voice vote. If there's any discussion or any dispute, we'll use the electronic devices. If we use the voice vote and it's not clear, I'll announce what I think the vote was. You can challenge my interpretation of a voice vote if seven people stand up. If I see seven people stand up, then we'll go to the electronic devices. In the electronic devices, those results will be final. I'm not sure if the people in the back can see the results on the screen, so I'm going to try to read out to you what those votes are each time we take a vote. Okay. All right, we're going to try one more practice vote to see if everybody's device is working, and if it's not, we need to know right away. Everybody ready? The question is going to be, are the Red Sox going to make the playoffs this year? We ready, Patty? We're now ready for vote? If you think they are going to vote, make the playoffs... If you think they are going to vote, make the playoffs, press the green button or yes 1A. If you don't think so, press the red vote, red button 2B. A lot of confident people in the room. 157 say yes, 242 say no. Is there anyone who feels the device did not work? Okay, we've got four people. All right, we're going to do this until everybody has a working device. Okay. Are we ready to try this again? All right, we'll do another vote. Will the Patriots make the playoffs this year? Wait until we announce that Patty's ready. All right, now you're ready. One for yes, they're going to make the playoffs. Two, they're not going to make the playoffs. You're looking for a little icon that says okay in the upper left-hand corner. If you don't see that, the device is not working. Seven seconds. All right, now is everybody satisfied? Their vote registered. Is this a line of people? I see a long line of people along the wall. Are all of you saying your devices did not work? Everybody? Okay. Even that last time?
So I think if I can have everyone's attention, these were all tested and they were all working. So if you want, you don't start using it until we say the vote is open. When you see the vote is open, you'll see a one for yes and a two for no. And at that point, that's when you vote. So before everybody turns those in, let's try it again, okay? So let's, don't wait. Okay, so Patty, open the vote. So is town meeting going to end at 10 o'clock tonight? Yes or no? Vote one yes, two no. Does everybody see the one and the two? It's supposed to be, it's supposed to cover back there. So the receiver is up here. You know what we could do? We can put another receiver up.
All right, we're going to try it one more time. It might be a problem with reception in the back of the room. Question is, will the Westwood High School girls lacrosse team win the state championship this year? When Patty says we're ready to go, you can start voting. Press the red or the green. You'll see a one or a two and then you'll see an okay. The people in the back, did you vote? Still didn't work? If yours worked, please sit down. If not, we might have to do this the old-fashioned way, at least for a little while. Mary, did it work? Did not work, okay. All right, we're going to get on to the business of the meeting. I'm going to turn this over to Stephanie McManus. She's, oh, Joe, that's right. Chairman of the Select Board, Joe Prevetera, is going to make some welcoming remarks.
Jim, if you need to interrupt me to do a test thing again, feel free. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Prevetera and I am Chair of the Westwood Select Board. And on behalf of my fellow Select Board members, Rob Gaudy and Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings, we welcome you here this evening. Your presence reflects a shared commitment to civic engagement and to the future of our town. And we very much appreciate your time and patience this evening. I have regularly attended town meetings since I was 10 years old and I have tremendous respect and appreciation for the process that we call open town meeting. Tonight, we'll be asking you for your support on a number of important items, including the operating budget, Fire Station 1 project, proposals related to zoning changes, and more. In a few moments, you will hear from our Finance Director, Stephanie McManus, who will provide an update on the town's financial position and walk us through the budget articles. We are continuing to invest in the town's capital needs while also strengthening our financial position by maintaining adequate reserves, an important factor that supports both today's services and our long-term stability. This all helps us with our AAA bond rating as well. The strong position is what allows us to find our great, fund our great school system, deliver high-quality services to all residents, our dedicated professional town employees that deliver these services, whether they are teaching in a classroom, plowing roads, responding to emergencies, organizing children's events in the library, and helping our seniors or running recreational programs make a daily impact. And we are grateful for all that our town employees do. We will also be considering changes related to alcohol licensing, accessory dwelling units, and affordable housing, topics that reflect both community values and our current needs. As many of you know, especially being New Englanders, our climate is changing and we have two Select Board articles this evening that will help us prepare for those changes and hopefully avoid any catastrophic flooding events in parts of our community, which I have seen. All in all, we're in a very strong position. Thanks to the hard work of our staff, our boards, our committees, and all of you, we've come to this meeting well-prepared. The 32 articles before us tonight are significant and the decisions that we make will help shape the future of our town. Together, let's ensure the future generations enjoy the same high quality of life that makes our town so special. Thank you again so much for being here this evening. And now, before I turn it back to the moderator, I'd like to take a moment to recognize some of our retiring elected officials who have spent countless hours away from their families serving our community. Please stand when I call your name. Kathleen Kate Nie from the Planning Board. Joshua Ames from the Planning Board. And Nancy Donahue from the Library Trustees. Thank you all so much for your wonderful service to our community. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, we're going to try to work through the technical difficulties. At this point, we're going to turn it over to Stephanie McManus. She's going to discuss the financial articles. When it comes time to vote, we'll do a practice vote to see if we can fix it. It appears to be a reception issue. There's some thought that if everybody shut off their cellphones, it might work. But if we can't be satisfied everybody's device is working, we're going to rely on a voice vote and we'll have people stand and be counted.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie McManus, the town's Finance Director. I'm going to give a high-level look at the town's finances and then a walkthrough of the budget articles you'll be voting on tonight. All of this information and even more detail is in your Town Meeting Warrant Book. So first, thank you all for being here tonight. The purpose of this short presentation, I promise, short, is two things, to give a snapshot of Westwood's strong financial position and to provide helpful context before we vote on all the financial warrant articles tonight. We're in a great place financially, thanks to years of careful planning and community support. Some highlights include clear financial policies that guide how we budget and plan, a balanced, responsible budget, healthy reserve funds to help us manage uncertainty, and ongoing investments in our schools, roads, public safety, and other infrastructure. As Chair Prevetera said, this all helps us maintain our AAA bond rating, the highest rating available, which allows us to borrow at lower interest rates, saving taxpayers money. Underlying all of this is a focus on transparency, long-term sustainability, and aligning with community priorities. That's what drives our financial decisions. The town's budget is not built overnight. It is a result of an ongoing process that starts each year in August and runs through to tonight's town meeting. The Select Board works with departments to build the proposed budget. Then the Finance and Warrant Commission holds public hearings so residents can weigh in. After that feedback, the final budget is brought to town meeting for a vote. It's a careful collaborative process to ensure we're allocating resources effectively and using taxpayer dollars responsibly. The town's budget covers a lot more than just daily services. We need to address multiple areas. Most people are familiar with the operating budget. That's the main operating budget. That's the schools, police, fire, DPW, the services you see every day. But we also fund long-term needs such as capital projects for buildings, equipment, and infrastructure, future obligations like pensions and retiree health benefits, and reserve accounts that help us plan ahead. All of these pieces work together and tonight's warrant articles touch on each one. The goal is always to balance service needs with long-term stability and the tax impact. We cannot put efforts into one area at the expense of others. We work hard to fund all essential services and maintain our infrastructure while carefully weighing the impact on taxpayers. Our goal is to deliver high value in a financially responsible way. There are a number of revenue sources that fund the town meeting budget. The pie chart here shows the revenue budget for FY '26 in particular. As shown in blue, real estate taxes account for 80% of the overall funding. The town does receive other revenue sources such as state aid, but those are limited. And while it is the main funding source, revenue from property taxes is restricted by Proposition 2.5. Prop 2.5 is a law in Massachusetts that limits the total amount of property tax revenue a community can raise annually to no more than 2.5% over the previous year's levy limit plus revenue from new growth. It's a very complicated calculation I won't go through tonight, don't worry. This limit on our main revenue source can make it difficult to achieve that balance of all areas of services we want to provide for in the budget. A town may choose to override these limits. General overrides and debt exclusions can be used to raise revenue beyond the limits set by Prop 2.5. Both must be placed on the ballot by a vote of the Select Board and must be passed by a two-thirds vote at town meeting. The fire station tonight on Article 14 would be a debt exclusion. We use other dedicated funding sources to support capital needs. These include school repairs, DPW equipment, and more. Importantly, these investments do not directly impact taxes. The two primary sources are free cash and meals and hotel tax. Free cash is essentially the municipal equivalent of a corporation's retained earnings. It represents the portion of the previous year's surplus, which is unspent funds and higher-than-expected revenues, that has been certified by the state as available for appropriation. All meals, hotel tax revenue is directed into a special-purpose fund, which may only be spent through town meeting appropriation. This fund has been consistently used to support capital investments and currently holds a balance of approximately $2.4 million. Ambulance receipts is another restricted funding source. That revenue goes into a separate account and must be voted by town meeting. We also have sewer retained earnings and cemetery perpetual care trust. Collectively, all these funding sources enable the town to make key capital investments without impacting taxes. Now that we've looked at where the town's funding comes from, let's turn to where those resources are spent. The pie chart here shows the expenditure budget for FY '26. The biggest area that you can see in blue is our school and municipal operating budget, 66% of the total spending. This includes schools, police, fire, public works, community programs. And 80% of that budget is spent on staffing, employees who provide the daily services to the community. We also budget for fixed costs, debt payments, and capital improvements. The goal is to provide excellent service that is steady and reliable year over year. Article 3 is the main operating budget, so I'm just going to go through that quickly. It's the main operating budget for both school and municipal services. For FY '26, the proposed operating budget is $120.3 million, which is a 4.1% increase over the current year. The graph shows the distribution of that budget by category. The largest portion, $59 million, shown in blue, is allocated to the schools, reflecting our continued investment in education. The municipal budget, shown in red, totals $26 million and supports a wide range of essential services. Fixed costs, including employee benefits and insurance, make up $23.8 million, shown in yellow. And then debt service, $7.2 million in green. It's important to emphasize that passing the operating budget is essential to ensuring continuity of town services, everything from keeping our schools running and roads maintained to paying our first responders. Without an approved budget tonight, the town cannot legally expend funds, which could disrupt services and daily operations. This article truly is the foundation of our financial plan for the upcoming year. So in summary, the FY '26 budget reflects Westwood's continued commitment to strong financial management, its balanced, structurally sound, and designed to maintain essential services. Article 1 and 2 are annual standard cleanup articles to close out the current fiscal year. Article 3, as I just reviewed, is the main operating budget. Articles 4 through 6 and 8 through 10 are capital projects funded with dedicated funding sources such as free cash and meals and hotel tax. Article 7 is a borrowing article for sewer infrastructure improvements. Articles 11 and 12 are our annual contributions to the stabilization fund, which is our main savings account in the town, and to the town's OPEB liability. Article 13 is a one-time appropriation of $300,000 from free cash to bolster the town's aid to the elderly fund, which provides property tax relief to qualifying senior homeowners. Then Select Board Article 14 is a borrowing article for Fire Station 1 project. Then Select Board Article 14 is a borrowing article for Fire Station 1 project. Thank you for listening and for being here tonight and being part of the process. Just for the -- Mr. Moderator, if I can just quickly introduce Articles 1, 2, and 3, and then turn it over to you?
Sure.
So Articles 1 and 2 are standard supplements to close out the current fiscal year. Article 1 has one item that will transfer $192,000 from the Finance and Warrant Commission Reserve Fund to close out the snow and ice budget. Article 2 is for supplements to the police and fire salary budgets due to fluctuations throughout the year in those departments, which is standard, as well as a standard supplement to the ambulance expense budget. The total appropriation request for that is $455,000, funded with transfers from free cash and ambulance receipts. Article 3, as I just mentioned, is the main FY26 operating budget. This will be voted as one article, and the moderator will walk us through Appendix D for a more detailed line-by-line view. Thank you, everyone. And you'll see a little bit more of me. Apologize in advance.
Do we -- all right. I'm going to go through some of the rules I missed. And if we're not satisfied that the electronic devices are working, we'll go to a voice vote and a standing vote. I just want to make sure we have counters if necessary. Are we ready to try it once more, Dottie? Okay. Let's try another practice vote. Will the Westwood High School boys' lacrosse team win the state championship this spring? Ready to vote, Patty? If you think they will, press the green button. If you think they will not, press the red button. Look at the little screen on your device. You should see a 1 for yes vote, a 2 for no vote, and it should say okay. And the clock is running down. Does anyone now feel their vote did not register? Just -- we've got a few. It appears to be a reception issue. We'll go to a voice vote. Don't walk out with these devices. They cost us a lot of money. I want to make sure you leave them with us. I'm going to announce the article and ask if there's discussion. If you want to discuss the article or argue about it, come to one of the standing microphones. We also have six people who are runners who have portable microphones. If you would like to stay in your seat, we can get you a microphone. You cannot speak till I recognize you. There's going to be a three-minute limit for everyone speaking tonight, and you have an opportunity to speak only once on an article. All the articles come before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission. There are two articles where they recommend indefinite postponement. I'll explain this again when we get to those articles. I think there's going to be a motion to amend a third article for indefinite postponement. Indefinite postponement means the recommendation is the town not adopt the article. If you're in favor of the article, you're going to vote against indefinite postponement. Indefinite postponement requires a majority vote. That's one more than half. If indefinite postponement fails, then someone needs to move the article, and then we'll have a vote on the article. And I forgot to call the meeting to order, so Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum, and I officially call this town meeting to order. Article 1, Fiscal 25 Budget Adjustments by Transfer. This article comes before you on the motion of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 1? We have a quorum. I've declared there's a quorum. Any other point of order? Who's speaking? Please stand. Your name and your address, please. Okay. The gentleman who was sitting questioned how many people are here voting? How many registered voters are here voting? I know 45 minutes ago, we had 241. So we have a quorum. Any other discussion on Article 1? We're going to do this by a voice vote. I'm going to ask for yays and nays, and I'm going to interpret whether it is majority vote or not. If seven people doubt my interpretation, we're going to take a standing count. We have counters? Okay. If you want to vote on the article, you have to be sitting in one of the chairs. You can be sitting up on the bleachers in one of the chairs. If you're against the wall and you want it, your vote counted, you can't be sitting there. All in favor of Article 1, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a majority vote in favor. Madam Clerk, it is a majority vote in favor. Article 2, Fiscal 25 Budget Adjustments by Appropriation. Is there any discussion on Article 2? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of Article 2? Thank you. Is there any discussion on Article 2? All in favor of Article 2, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a majority vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 3 is the operating budget. The way we're going to do this is you're going to turn to your book to Appendix D, which is on page 76. And I'm going to read off the page numbers till we get to 83. If you would like to discuss any item on that page, please yell out "hold," and we'll get back to it. Page 76? Page 77? Page 78? Page 79? Page 80? Page 81? Page 82? Page 83? We've got no holes, so we'll now go to discussion on the budget. And just for the record, we have 691 who registered for town meeting. Is there any discussion on Article 3? Please state your name and your address.
Brian Kamaker, 95 University Avenue. I think that a lot more people would be more comfortable discussing Article 3 had we gotten this book a few weeks ago instead of a few days ago. I realize that it was online, but a lot of people weren't aware of that. Anyway, there are some issues that I find on that. First of all, we had last year's huge override. We have an override coming up on this ballot, and then we have upcoming overrides in the years to come. The town is still raising everyone's taxes by the absolute maximum that the law allows. That's very troubling. People and businesses are struggling. It may come to a surprise, but there are a lot of people in this town that don't make high-six-figure and seven-figure salaries, and this hurts. Another traumatic issue that wasn't addressed is that these buildings that we're paying all these overrides for were how we have to do it because there were no maintenance over the years, particularly the fire station. I didn't hear anything about maintenance of buildings, even though that is the biggest issue in front of us. So there seems -- I think they need to go back to the drawing board on this. And also, it's troubling to a lot of people that they're asking for more money, but they seem to have plenty of money for, you know, these PR campaigns and fancy promotions of things that the town officials want. Maybe if they didn't do that, you know, things would work out better. Anyway, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Please hold your applause, please. No applauding, no booing, please. Yep.
Hi, Eileen Segal, 257 Alder Road. And I just wanted to -- just something I just heard, overrides mentioned. When I read through, I didn't see any overrides. I saw debt exclusions, which are different. And also, I also just wanted to rebut feedback about buildings not being well-maintained. My understanding is that buildings are well-maintained. I'll specifically go to the school committee meeting on April 7th, when we had a facilities study presented to us, and what they did say multiple times was that all the buildings were well-maintained. And I find it hard to believe that that would differ among our different buildings, municipal buildings in town. So that's all.
Any other discussion on Article 3? Mr. Gardi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to talk for a moment about process, because this is the purest form of democracy that exists on Earth, open town meeting, where you all, we all, with this sticker as registered voters, are members of the legislature. The ladies and gentlemen over there, who are members of FinCom, I'd like you to stand up for a moment, because these folks are appointed by the moderator. They go through a hearing process and countless hours of meetings, where they meet with the Select Board, where they meet with the Planning Board, where they meet with the school committee, where they break into subcommittees and meet with department heads. They act as the vetting process to ask the questions that we know will be on the minds of each of you as residents. So when you see the vote that was taken by the FinCom, be confident in the fact that the discussions were had in detail on any number of topics. These folks act as basically the practice before the big gate. So what you see in your books tonight in terms of recommendations from the FinCom are part of a very thoughtful and deliberative process that takes a tremendous amount of time, and these folks all give of their time, as does everybody up here. And just want to thank them for their part in the process, and that way you have an understanding of what their recommendation means in these books. Thank you.
Please hold the applause. There's one who wanted to speak.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zhou Shaoqiong. You can call me Ada, 73 Partry Drive. I have a question. What will be the salary for the Assistant Fire Chief in 2026?
Was that on one of the pages I read?
I think in salary, but I don't know which page, but.
So the woman has a question. Does anybody want to answer that?
I think.
Apparently not. You haven't -- 71?
The salary for that position in FY26 will be approximately $123,000.
What -- again?
$123,000.
This is not the number I learned. I got payroll 2024 through a public record request, and you sent me the payroll 2024. And the Assistant Fire Chief's payroll gross income is $170,000. And then I saw.
I just want -- sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to clarify, the base salary is $123,000? And he has -- I'm always just sorry, our HR.
The gross, yeah, in total. How much is the total? I believe it's 200, if it's correct.
$182.
$182?
Yes.
Okay, $182. So according to Zippo Recorder, the average salary for Assistant Fire Chief in Massachusetts is about $100,000 a year. So why are -- why should a taxpayer fund a salary that is almost twice in the amount?
Okay. Is there any other discussion on Article 3? Hearing none, seeing none. Article 3 comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a majority vote.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. You're finished. Please take a seat. We're ready to vote. All in favor of Article 3, please say aye.
I asked a question, so do I entitled to get the answer?
I can't force people to answer the question. You can ask a question, but if nobody wants to answer it, I can't force them to answer it. Do you have any other point to make?
No, thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on Article 3? All in favor of Article 3, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a vote in favor. All right, I see seven. We're going to have to go to a standing count.
So can we please have our counters come forward? Janice Wright, Dave O'Leary, John Cummings, Tom Daley, and Jennifer Kinnear.
Remember, if you want your vote counted, you've got to be at a seat. And when the counters are ready, I'm going to ask the people in favor of Article 3 to This will go smoother after the first vote. All right, if you're voting in favor of Article 3, please stand. All right, if you're voting in favor of Article 3, please stand. Dottie assures me these voting devices are working. Have all been tested? No, I mean the counters. All right, the counter's ready to go again? Oh, okay.
What, what is that? Oh, the student family? I don't think so. No, where, the information? Uh, maybe I'll look into that. Did you do it? Uh, oh, I didn't realize, no. I didn't see. I am a part of, I joined one for like Massachusetts, like Student Family Voice Committee. Yeah, but, yeah, I didn't hear about that on. Yeah, I'm excited because it's like the first, like, it's online, first like meeting is this week, so. Really? I don't think so. I think that's one of the most debated ones.
I never see anyone saying, "You should do..."
I see, I see like some signs that are like, "Say no," because it's wasteful. I think that's one of the biggest ones, or that's like one of the main issues tonight. And another one is like the affordable housing one. I heard that there was something like that. I think that's going to be... Yeah.
And we're going to take, we're going to count the no votes. So all those voting against Article 3, please stand. All right, while they're tabulating the votes, everybody can take a seat. I'm an optimist by nature. We're going to test these devices one more time. It's been suggested that if it's not working, hold your device above your head. All right? If you think we're going to finish this evening and be done with town meeting, vote yes. If you think we're not going to finish this evening, we're going to have to go into another evening, vote no. Okay. Did I go too early for you? Okay. All right, it's still open. Is there anybody feels their voting device did not work on that vote? Okay, we still have some more. We're going to stay with the voice vote. We have a, we have a point of order. What's your point of order, Sarah? Can you go to the microphone, please? Do we have a runner? Can somebody?
As an alternative, consider asking the people in the back to move to the empty seats up here, where we don't have a problem with reception.
It's an idea. Anyone who felt their device did not work, would you please move forward? You have a point of order? Okay, I will.
Hello, I've done it three times. The third time, it didn't work until I held it down for about a good five seconds. So that might be part of the problem.
Well, I want to announce the vote. There were 455 votes in favor, 149 votes against. It is a majority vote. The article passes. There's nothing on the floor right now. But motion for reconsideration? We have a motion for reconsideration and a second. Motion for reconsideration requires a two-thirds vote. And if it fails, we cannot reconsider this article again. Is there any discussion on reconsideration of Article 3? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay. If you want to reconsider Article 3, you're voting yes, and then we'll have to vote again. If you don't want to reconsider Article 3 and you're satisfied with the vote, you're going to vote against reconsideration. All in favor of reconsideration, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay!
It is a two-thirds vote against. That vote is final. Now, I think Stephanie McManus is going back up again for the remaining fiscal articles.
I'm just going to quickly rock through the next couple of articles. So Articles 4 through 10, the next ones you'll be voting on, are... through 10, the next ones you'll be voting on, are the capital budget articles. 4 and 5 are the base capital articles for both municipal and schools and are both funded by Free Cash. This funding plan helps maintain the town's assets and infrastructure. Articles 6 and 7 are for sewer improvements. Article 6 proposes $75,000 for sewer capital, all funded through the sewer retained earnings. And Article 7 seeks $500,000 in borrowing for additional sewer work. This project will be part of the MWRA, the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, grant program. So of the $500,000, 75% will be funded through the grant and 25% will be funded through an MWRA interest-free loan. It's a great program we participate in. Articles 8, 9, and 10 are all for additional capital improvements. These articles are separated by dedicated funding sources such as Free Cash or Meals and Hotel Tax. And a list of all the capital projects, including their funding sources, is detailed in the town meeting book. So all of these investments are carefully planned, responsibly funded, and essential to the continued reliability and safety of town operations. Thank you.
All right, we're now ready to discuss Article 4, which is an appropriation of $1,525,000 for municipal capital improvements. Comes before you on the motion of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 4? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor of Article 4, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 5, an appropriation of $1,140,000 for school capital improvements. Oh, thank you. You can yell at me. Is there any discussion on Article 5? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 5, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 6 is an appropriation of $75,000 for sewer capital improvements. Is there any discussion on Article 6? This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. It requires a majority vote. Hearing no discussion, seeing no one wishing to speak, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 7 is an appropriation of $500,000 for sewer capital borrowing. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This is a borrowing article, so it requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 7? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 7, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 8 is an appropriation of $1,035,000 for additional capital improvements. Comes on the recommendation before you of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. Requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 8? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 8, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 9, an appropriation of $1,252,000 for additional capital improvements. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. Requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 9? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 9, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 10 is an appropriation of $920,000 for additional capital improvements. Comes before you on the recommendation of FinCom that the town so vote. Requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 10? We have one gentleman up here. Do you want to come to a mic? We have a runner.
There's 500, oh, Phil Dunkelberger, 125 Sunrise Road. There's $520,000 for a Shein electrical replacement. I've heard in the past discussion about the Shein maybe, replacement of Shein may be on the agenda. Are we spending half a million dollars on a facility that's going to be replaced?
The school superintendent is going to speak.
Excuse me, Tim, we have our school superintendent. Sorry for having to crutch my way over. While there's conversation about potentially building a new Shein, that's at least six or seven years away at a minimum from being able to open. The electrical panel at Shein right now is in desperate need of repair. It's a safety issue, and we have a whole generation of students coming through that building before a new school could possibly open. We want to make sure that we protect the safety of those students and staff in the building for the incoming years, and so I urge you to vote yes in favor of this article.
Is there any other discussion on Article 10? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 10, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 11 is an appropriation of $125,000 for the stabilization fund for fiscal year 26. Is there any discussion? Is Article 11 here? Any discussion on Article 11? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 11, say aye. This comes before you on the recommendation of FinCom that you so vote, and a majority vote is required. Now, all in favor of Article 11, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 12 is an appropriation of $1,590,000 for the OPEB liability trust fund for fiscal year 26. Comes before you on the recommendation of FinCom that the town so vote. This article requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 12? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 12, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 13 is an appropriation of $300,000 for aid to the elderly for senior tax relief. It's appropriation of $300,000, aid to the elderly for senior tax relief. Comes before you on the recommendation of FinCom that the town so vote. Requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 13? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 13, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. All right, that's the end of round one. Who am I turning this over to? Turning this over to the Select Board, I believe.
Can you hear me? There we go. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings for Chickadee Lane. I am a member of your Select Board, and I am joined by my colleagues, Chair Joe Prevetera and member Rob Gotti, to speak with you this evening about the Fire Station 1 project, Article 14. As you will recall, in January of 2024, Special Town Meeting authorized the expenditure of funds for the design and bid documents for a new main fire station, FS1. The town then retained an architectural firm and an owner's project manager, as required by state law, who worked with the fire department and the design working group to design the new station based on needs identified in feasibility and operational studies performed. Tonight, we present you with that design, which has undergone extensive public process and the final bid, which has, excuse me, given that the town has resolved a legal challenge to the project. The Select Board has voted to withdraw its support for Article 15, a proposed zoning bylaw amendment related to public safety facilities, which was solely directed at providing a path for the town to meet its public safety needs with the construction of a new fire station. And we will be moving tonight for indefinite postponement on that article, Article 15. With respect to Article 14 now before us, assuming this body votes tonight in favor by a two-thirds majority, by law, we are also required to obtain a simple majority vote on a debt exclusion ballot question, and that special town election will take place on June 3, here in the Westwood High School gymnasium, with early voting available on Wednesday, May 21, and Thursday, May 22, from 8:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. in the police station. We are now pleased to provide you with a brief video on the proposed Fire Station 1 project, after which you will hear remarks from our fire chief, Steve Lund. Thank you. The Fire Station 1 proposal comes before town meeting as an urgent public safety matter tonight, after extensive work and public process. FS1 was originally built in 1948, when Westwood had less than 6,000 residents and a volunteer, all-male fire department, which did not live in the firehouse, responding to about 98 calls a year. Much has changed in the nearly 80 years since the station was first built, including the town's population and density, the number of residential and commercial structures, call volume, department size and composition, equipment and apparatus, and operational standards. For example, fire trucks are larger and carry equipment that has more than doubled their weight. The workforce now includes both male and female firefighters. When the station was built, there were no ADA laws, firefighter safety regulations, or applicable Massachusetts building codes. Today, FS1 suffers from major deficiencies, which are both structural and operational in nature, and which also impact the health and safety of our firefighters. Structural issues include cracking in the back corner of the building, which has worsened despite multiple repairs. Due to the significantly increased weight of our fire apparatus, the floor of the apparatus bay is buckling. Temporary supports installed a dozen years ago hold up the apparatus floor from the floor below, reducing the space available to the department's mechanic to repair and service the department's apparatus. Due to insufficient garage bay space, some fire apparatus must be stored in the lower rear level and must exit through the neighborhood behind the station on emergency calls, adding critical seconds to response times. Firefighting safety guidelines dictate that there should be hot and cool zones in a station. Hot zones, like the apparatus bay, are laden with contamination. Cool zones are places with no contamination. FS1 is currently one big hot zone. Even the firefighters' living quarters are not properly decontaminated. Our fire department today is vastly different in comparison to the team in 1975. We are now fortunate to have both male and female firefighters, but the current building does not allow for appropriate living quarters for a coed staff. FS1 is not ADA compliant, and the building is not accessible for people with disabilities, including those who stop at the station for emergency medical care. In 2013, Westwood's Public Safety Facilities Task Force prioritized Fire Station 2 in Islington and the police station, and we were fortunate to fund these projects within Proposition 2 and 1/2, thanks to incremental tax growth from University Station. Attention then shifted to school buildings culminating in the Pine Hill School project. The FS1 Design Working Group focused on the must-haves versus any nice-to-haves during the design and development process. The resulting building design is one which will meet our needs now and 50 years into the future. This building design is 36,000 square feet, with the size and layout being driven by the five apparatus bays facing High Street to minimize response times, which we know helps to save lives. In addition to the many working group sessions, this project was shaped by extensive public process at over 50 public meetings. Further, and importantly, this project has received unanimous support from the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Commission on Disability, the Conservation Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Finance and Warrant Commission. Taking into account the operational and safety needs of the fire department and the goal to build a facility which will serve the town for decades, we are excited to share this new building design. Here are some of the items accomplished with the design. Mission-ready fire apparatus, which needs to be positioned for rapid deployment so the fire department can provide the fastest response possible to residents. It provides for accessibility and a triage room so residents and others who regularly stop at the station seeking emergency care can easily obtain it. The facility also houses a maintenance bay, where routine maintenance and repairs of the fleet will occur. This is critical to having our apparatus remain mission-ready even when undergoing minor maintenance. Sending apparatus out of town for service is costly and leads to unnecessary and sometimes lengthy delays in getting them back in service. To reduce construction costs, the new station was designed as a simple box with the essential apparatus bays defining the first level. The training, living, and administrative spaces are positioned directly above, which includes gender-neutral dorm space. There are 10 dorm rooms in this building, seven for the firefighters stationed here 24/7, and three additional dorm spaces for surge staffing during emergencies like blizzards and storms. This also allows for future growth. The building also includes a kitchen and dining area, a training room large enough to accommodate the entire department, a fitness area, and offices for the administrative staff. There are five offices for the five staff who work the day shift, and three offices for on-shift staff to prepare required reporting. The design bid process has allowed for complete design development, competitive bidding, and the establishment of a market-based construction cost in preparation for tonight's vote to borrow funds for the project. The design bid process ensures that voters are making a funding decision based on actual bid pricing rather than estimates, thus reducing risk and uncertainty. Based on the bid results, the total cost of the project is $38.1 million, with the breakout of costs shown here. The town is seeking a debt exclusion authorization to fund this project as presented in Article 14. When we pass a debt exclusion authorization, it means we raise taxes to pay for a specific project that has been voted for a specific period of time. The increase in taxes associated with the project lasts only as long as the borrowing term. Borrowing funds with a 30-year bond Borrowing funds with a 30-year bond at a rate estimated at 4.75% results in the average household in Westwood, valued at $1.2 million, paying about $372 per year. That’s about $1 a day. The cost of doing nothing is substantial, with the attendant health risks to our firefighters, the risk of structural failure of the building, and the known escalation costs over time for this project. The cost for the project has also been reduced significantly due to the sharp focus on only what is needed and on controlling costs. An estimate of $43 million was quoted at the Special Town Meeting in January of 2024. Tonight, we present a significantly reduced final cost of $38.1 million. Fire Station One needs to be replaced as soon as possible, so that we can ensure that the Westwood Fire Department remains able to deliver the exceptional level of service upon which we all depend, while also keeping our firefighters, who risk their lives for us every day, safe. Constructing a new fire station now is also the most fiscally responsible action we can take as a town. We respectfully ask for your favorable vote on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and for your consideration on this. This station to the fire department is all about safety. It’s safety for the residents. We have designed it so that the five bays will have every piece of apparatus that we need ready to respond to you in as quick a time possible. Right now, we would have to go, if you had a brush fire at your house, we would have to go to Station Two, pick it up, and then respond from there if Engine Two was out. Want to talk about, should we not have five doors on the front? If we had a different location with a flat surface, not the topography that we have in this location, we would be able to have drive-through doors. So that would actually, if we had four, it would actually be eight, because you can respond from both sides of the station. That’s not a possibility with this site. That’s why we had to go with the five up front. The other part of the safety is for our firefighters. One of the things that we’ve hit on a lot is the decon spaces, and what we didn’t say was it’s not just for fires. When we go on ambulance runs, a lot of the time, we come back and we are covered with biohazards, bodily fluids, bedbugs, and having a space that’s away from our living areas where we can remove our uniforms, have them cleaned, and then move to the living space without tracking those things into where we live is huge. The three things that kill firefighters the most are cancer, cardiac arrest, and suicide. This station addresses all three. We’ve talked about the decon space and how that’s going to reduce our exposure to carcinogens, and how it won’t be in the living space at all. The wellness room and training areas are a good way for us to be working out, physically fit, working off stress. And then finally, the private dorms. When you come back from a tough call and you need a place to go and decompress by yourself, we don’t have a space like that at all right now. So the fire department, this station is vital for the health and safety of us and for the health and safety of you. Thank you.
That was excellent. Well done. My name is Joe Prevetera. I’ve spoken before. I would like to take a moment to discuss public policy as an elected official and what it means to me. You elected us, Mary Ann and Rob, to promote public policy for the residents of Westwood. It is our job as Select Board members to pursue public policy initiatives that benefit all of the residents of Westwood. It is good public policy for the town to have a fire department that rates as high as possible on the insurance standards office rating scale or ISO scale. The fire chief has been quite clear that building a new fire station would markedly improve our ISO rating. The higher rating not only reflects a more professional department, but may translate into lower insurance costs because some insurers use that rating when underwriting our homeowner policies. It’s good public policy to have a fire department that is attractive when recruiting new firefighter candidates. We want to attract the best and the brightest. Our current FS1 is far from being attractive. Fire chiefs all across Massachusetts are struggling to recruit a very scarce commodity, that is firefighter paramedics. A new building built to current industry standards for health and safety, as the chief mentioned, of its members will make Westwood much more appealing when vying for these firefighter paramedics. Lastly, is good public policy to continue to service fire department apparatus in-house, because contracting work, that work to third parties, costs more and takes equipment out of service for long periods of time due to the constraints on availability of certified mechanics in our local area. A new Fire Station One will allow us to continue to make these repairs more quickly and with lower repair costs. It is our responsibility as Select Board members to promote good public policy, and voting for this station is good public policy. Thank you. Article 14 is an appropriation for Fire Station One FS1 Construction Project. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 14? Mr. Folsom, and then Ms. Wong.
I’m Bob Folsom. I live at 35 Smith Drive in Westwood. I also own the property at 649 High Street, funeral home next door to the fire station. I am probably one of the two closest of butters that are affected by this project. I do realize that the butters behind the neighborhood did have concerns, and they did take the town to court. I just want to say for the record, I was not part of that process, so I’m speaking only from my own viewpoint. We’ve owned the property there since, next to the fire station, since 1959. The fire station was actually two doors away, was the original part of the building. It was built in 1947, I think your notes say 48. It was built there because in 1946, the original fire station burnt to the ground. Just a little bit of trivia for you. In the 70s, the town purchased the property right next door to us, it was the Hagman House, and moved it and built the current station that’s there. We totally supported that. We still support our firefighters. We’re totally in favor of their needs and supporting that. But my problem comes, and maybe you can see where I’m coming from, you’re going to put up a 114-foot-long, 55-foot-high wall between my property and the fire station wall. I’d like to call your attention to the picture that’s on the front of the handout that you were given, the Q&amp;A fact sheet. If the distances between our buildings look like that, you’d have 100% of my support. I would be totally on board. And I’m not saying I’m against the firefighters. Actually, the chief has been very open to us. He spent a lot of time talking to us. The deputy chief has talked to us, too. So I have absolutely no problem with the fire department. They even used my parking lot last weekend for an open house they had to sell you on this project. If you look at that picture, you see there’s a little yellow car there? That makes it look like my driveway is two cars wide, at least. It’s not. It’s a single driveway. So if you move that car over one width to the left, you’re going to have the edge of my property. If you take that wall of the fire station and move it over to almost, just to the left of that little red maple tree in front, that’s where the wall is going to be.
Good. 20 seconds to go, Mr. Folsom.
Very good. Anyway, thank you for allowing me vent. I have spoken to all the boards and told them my position and hurt squat, so anyway. Thank you very much.
Ms. Wong, why don’t you come up to the microphone? If anyone else would like to speak after Ms. Wong, please come up to the microphone and let a runner know. Hold on. Can we get that going?
Hi, yeah. Zhou Shaoqiong, 73, Patry Drive. I have a question. Has any member of the INCON committee, Select Board of Fire Station Working Group, revealed a complete budget document before recommending Article 14 for today’s meeting? I’m not talking about the total budget document which posted on Westwood Town website. I’m talking about the complete budget document with all details.
Which committee were you asking? Which committee did you want to answer that question? I didn’t understand.
Anyone has reviewed INCON or anyone? Yeah, okay, yes. So I believe, so the complete budget documents are acceptable to them. I believe a public, public building project needs transparency to ensure accountability and committee trust. On April 20, on April 17, I submitted a public record request, the complete budget document, but Deputy Administrator Ms. Molly and Town Clerk Dottie has refused to release them to me as of today. My question is to Molly and Dottie, is this your decision or were you directed to withhold them? If so, by whom? Why are you withholding this document? Is it because of my Asian background, or do you believe?
I don’t think you can make a Freedom of Record request to individuals. You said you made it to Mr. Gotti and to someone else. That’s not where you direct Freedom of Information requests. What’s your next point, please?
I don’t understand. So can I complete my?
Yes, go ahead. Go on to the next point.
Or do you believe my, the public isn’t entitled to them?
I’m not sure. Could you repeat that, please?
So I asked why, why town refused to release complete budget document to public like me?
Maybe I misunderstood. You said you submitted that request to Mr. Gotti and to someone else individually.
Not Molly, Molly here and Dottie, yeah, on April 17, through public record request, the complete budget document.
Molly Fitzpatrick, Deputy Town Administrator. So to clarify, the original public records request asked for any documentation that includes itemized costs associated with the project. The town responded with the document we believe fulfilled that request, and itemized budget is not available. More granular details, such as the pricing for individual fixtures like kitchen refrigerators or bathroom faucets, are not yet available. Those specifics are developed later in this process, typically by the architect and owner’s project manager, as part of the bid documents. That level of detail doesn’t exist yet in any formal finalized document that the town has access to. The town has hired a professional design team and project manager to oversee those aspects of the work. Their job is to ensure scope and pricing are reasonable and to protect the town’s interest. We remain committed to transparency, and we’ll continue to share information as it becomes available. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
We have the next woman. You ready to speak, ma’am? Your three minutes is up, ma’am.
Thank you. Jodi Petricelli, 30, Rockman Road. I have a, what I hope is a simple question. As I look at the documents and this new fire station is being primarily run by what everyone is saying is the capacity of what we need by way of personnel and equipment for firefighting in Westwood today. But if I look at the Islington Station, if I understand correctly, we are currently only operating one shift with one piece of fire apparatus out of that station that has the capacity for three. So my question is, if we increased the capacity per shift at Islington, added a second shift and a second piece of equipment, because it can fit there, would that allow us to meet what the fire chief is saying is our needs and shrink the size of Fire Station One, just by shifting some of the equipment and some of the personnel to Islington, so it’s not all at Fire Station One?
Please hold the applause. Please hold.
There’s three firefighters on four shifts, so there’s 12 that work, that work over there. There’s, they’re there 24/7, 365, three firefighters. They respond in either the engine or ladder two, or the squad truck if they’re there. We run very different than a lot of other departments do. If you go to, say, Dedham or Norwood, when you show up to work, you’re assigned to an engine, and that’s it. In Westwood, they show up, they could be on, assigned to the engine, but they could also, if an ambulance run comes in, they get on the ambulance and they go. If we get a second medical, the people that are assigned permanently on the engine that day would take that. We wouldn’t have an engine available at Station One, but we would at Station Two. So we cross-man, we do more than the other towns are doing with less firefighters. We need the flexibility to do that. That’s why we have to have them all in one building.
So this plan would allow you to meet 100% of Westwood Fire needs out of Fire Station One?
Out of both stations, and we can never meet 100%. We always rely on mutual aid.
All right. And we run one, one three-man crew per shift out of Islington?
Correct.
What’s the capacity?
Is it seven? Seven?
Thank you.
Okay. Please, please, sir.
Hello. Fred Pierce, 17 Salisbury Drive. I would be interested to know to what extent the believed population demographics factored into this decision about the size of the fire station. I’m under the impression that people are having less kids. I’m under the impression that the limited, there’s limited availability of new houses coming in Westwood. They tend to be knockdowns, which is a net gain of zero. If you knock a house down and somebody buys it, that’s not a population increase, give or take a person or two. Where are we on the issue of demographics and increased population as a motivator for two and a half times bigger fire station?
Okay. I just heard that the population from the 2020 census is 16,266.
So there was an operational study that took place in 2023, finalized in 2024, that did show marginal increase in population over the next 20, 30, 40 years. What it showed in particular, though, was the increase in over 65 population. That population is supposed to increase significantly in Westwood and is the primary user of fire service.
And where are they going to live physically? Where are these houses or apartments or condos that you’re talking about?
I just said the population was going to age.
They have to go somewhere. Are they going to live in the street or the fire station? I didn’t get an answer.
So the answer you got was that there was an operational study that showed there will be some population
that showed there will be some population growth, that the composition of buildings in town has changed, as was part of what Mary Ann had in her video, right? We have had increased density. You see the development that is going in on Everett Street as an example of where there will be additional growth. We have seen significant growth over that time period in call volume. And the reason the chief highlighted the apparatus space being arrayed on 109 is to maximize, minimize response time. And if you actually looked at a heat map in the, in this operational study of where that call volume goes, unsurprisingly, it goes to our population centers where we have our oldest folks. Fox Hill Village, Westwood Glen, Highland Glen, and increasingly to Holmes at 49. So there is a significant change over time in the nature of the volume of calls and the composition of the demographics of the community.
I don't doubt for a minute that people would like to build, but where are they going to do it?
Hi, Eileen Segal, 257 Alder Road. And I just first want to say this, this FS1 has been talked about for more than 18 months. There have been meetings. There have been projects. There has been feedback taken. There's been all of these meetings and all this information presented. So I understand that all these people are asking all these questions, but this has been going on for 18 months. So, and these questions have been answered and feedback has been taken. So I think it's really, really good that people are asking questions that are paying attention, but you've really got to get here sooner. I also just, I just wanted to say that. But I also want to say that property values have also dramatically increased. So yes, our real estate taxes have gone up. If we wanted to talk about people who need help, I'm a single mom and I'm a teacher and I live in this town and I think this is important. Because what we can't, what we absolutely cannot do is we can't shortchange safety. Like, we have to have safety in this town. And the fact that we have paramedics who can administer life-saving medication, Norwood Hospital doesn't exist right now. I, I, I don't know if the closest one is Beth Israel Needham, but if that's the closest hospital, then that's kind of scary if you don't have paramedics on staff. Like, I, I don't want to seem too harsh, but I really think we have to think of it as not where can we cut corners and what can we do with and without right now at this point? If this doesn't pass tonight, it's going to take probably a minimum of another two years to figure something out. Things are going to cost so much more money. And this has been worked on for a long time. We all have to be really, really thoughtful. This is our town. And these are our kids and our parents and our families and our friends. And even though nobody wants to think of a worst-case scenario, when that happens, when it hits rock bottom or something awful happens, you want to have the resources and you want to have the tools to have people or you saved or your life saved or your, the life of your loved one saved. And we really just can't cut corners on that. So I just want to call people's attention back to that, please. Because it's so much better to have things and say, we can have this happen if we need it, rather than say, well, we didn't have it and therefore this is our loss.
Please, no applause. Sir?
Phil Shapiro, 159 Mill Street. So I'm a finance person. And what I would say is that we are in and we are going to be in a worse inflationary environment. There's a lot of uncertainty. If we can do this now, borrow this money and pay it back over a limited period of time, that it will be a good investment for the town. If, if we don't do this now, we'll be doing it two or three or four or six years from now. So I think as a finance person, this makes a lot of sense to me. As a fairness person, this makes a lot of sense to me. We've got female firefighters who don't have appropriate facilities. And we've got firefighters who come out to our homes and deal with hazardous materials and go back to a fire station where they're having to deal with those materials in a way that is not, is not safe. So I, I really feel good about the fact that, and I love this clock. This is just like Major League Baseball. I love this. But I, I really appreciate the fact as, as a former town treasurer and select person, that the town has gone through the process of right sizing this. I'm not sure we've always done that in the past, but I don't think there's a lot of fat here. This is a project that has gone down as opposed to go up in size and scope and cost. So we're doing what needs to be done, what should be done, but we're not doing a lot of extras here. And it was great for the 1950s, but, you know, in fairness, I'd like someday to see half of our firefighters be females. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to do this. We did it with the fire station, with the police station, I'm sorry, and with, with Fire Station Two. I think we got to bite the bullet and do it here because it ain't going to be any cheaper five or 10 years from now. I'll tell you that right now.
Please, please. Mr. Shapiro, I like the clock, too, and I like people who are willing to give up time, give it back. You can make your point in less than three minutes.
Mr. Moderator, before I go, I think there's someone who's been waiting longer than me over there.
My name is, am I on?
Yeah, you're working.
Okay. My name is Marlese Schwartz. And altogether fireman. I live at 32 Westwood Glen Road. And I'm sure most of the firemen here know that because they've been coming to my apartment off and on for the last, I think it's a year now. Year and a half ago, I passed out cold in Wegmans and they had to take me to the hospital and the firemen saved my life. So I feel a little more strongly that they should have the best that they can get. I, I have since wound up in the hospital several more times and they've always been there to help me. And I do not like the idea of having to wait while somebody digs the roof off of them when it collapses. And I do not like the idea of hanging from the ceiling of my apartment or the window while they wait to get there as somebody digs them out of the apartment building or rather the fire department. I think that we need the best for our firemen we can have because none of us know when we're going to pass out cold in Wegmans and wind up looking up at the ceiling going, okay, what happened? And some nice man is going to tell us that you passed out cold in the city, in the checkout counter at Wegmans and we're taking you to the hospital. Which hospital would you like to go to? The best we can do for our firemen and our policemen is what we're doing to help ourselves because in the end, they're here for that, for us. And nobody likes to admit that they're going to need an ambulance, but they will come again.
Ms. Macy Phelps?
How do you follow that? I'm Mary Macy Phelps, 295 Clapper Tree Street, and I am speaking as an, as an individual resident. I do currently serve the town as a library trustee. And prior to that, I served for seven years on the Finance and Warrant Commission, four of those as chair. And with, that's the lens that I want to use to, to make just a couple of points related to process and prudence. And I, I fully support the article. I'm going to be brief on process because remember the, the select board, Rob Gotti said it well earlier when he recognized everything that goes on with FinCom. And I can attest from having spent so many years in the seats that you're sitting in that between our paid professional staff, our outside experts, elected and appointed officials, and the lengthy process of public hearings that, that Ms. LeBlanc Cummings mentioned, with this kind of project to get here tonight, there's no stone unturned, there's no question unanswered. Does that guarantee that it's a perfect project? Absolutely not. Such a thing just doesn't exist. But it means to get to where we are asked, what we are asked to vote on tonight, many options have been considered, many viewpoints have been considered. And trade-offs have already been made where they're necessary. And I would remind everyone about all those unanimous votes. I don't remember in my time on the FinCom there being a unanimous vote in favor of any project of this magnitude. And the fact that these men and women went through everything they did and came to a unanimous vote, as well as considering the other unanimous votes that were mentioned. I think that speaks volumes about how much has gone into this. And second, a note on prudence. Sometimes we, we, and I know I, would tend to think that prudence means being cautious. But when I looked up the Latin origin, it actually means to see ahead, to foresee and to provide for. In other words, look to the future and make a shrewd decision. All right? And it was said that this is intended to cover our needs for 50 years. That may or may not include population increases. It, it can include changes in needs. As we've seen, the needs of the fire station have changed over the years. I was chair of the FinCom when the town voted to fund the new library. At that time, some thought it wasn't prudent to build a bigger library because we didn't need a bill, a bigger building to house books. Well, 10-plus years later.
20 seconds.
Okay, the, the library is vibrant with books, but with students, with mahjong, with author visits, with incredible amounts of activities. Thanks to a prudent decision 10 years ago, we've been able to introduce new programs and reconfigure space as needed to meet the changing needs of the town.
Put a period at the end of that sentence.
All right. Thank you. Let's make this last for a long time.
Nancy James, 158 Oak Street. So I have followed the whole process very closely. And it's been a, excuse me, a very in-depth process looking at the needs. And I first learned of the need for a new fire station, excuse me, in my time on long-range planning. So like Mr. Shapiro, I have a finance background, but really look at things holistically. Okay, so we, yes, we absolutely need a new fire station. And if we don't build a new fire station now, I have great concerns over being able to fund schools. So there could be a, a lengthy delay. So I think it's, it's right in front of us. I also come to you as a Thurston parent. So believe me, I hear over and over and over again about a roof leak and, and things that are wrong with the building. So that's not lost on me, but there needs to be a, a logical path. So we need to build this fire station. It needs to be a station that meets the needs. I don't think that anyone dreamed up an extravagant station. The amount of misinformation throughout this whole process has been honestly a little disturbing to me. Accounting, hallways as a room and almost like a deliberate attempt to thwart a project that absolutely needs to happen. So I'm all for coming to a meeting and having a healthy debate, but come and ask the right questions. I mean, there's a saying, it's not the answer that enlightens, it's the question. So take time and really understand the process. This shouldn't be the first time that people are hearing about it. So I really strongly encourage you. I, I am absolutely opposed to wasteful spending, like, like probably anyone else in this room. If we don't pass this tonight and build a station that's needed, I, I have a fear, by no means am I a structural engineer, but that floor will give. It's a matter of time. And with that, there goes the apparatus and what's the cost to replace it? And then what do we do in the meantime? And I'll give you 49 seconds.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Nie. I'm on the planning board. You're welcome. We do great work on that board. I'm, I'm very proud of what we've done. So I support, I, I'm, I'm speaking just for myself. They, they are far better dressed and ask that I not speak for them if I were going to come here. So we all supported this article. And, but I have a little bit more to say about it. I want to put it just in context about what has changed in our town, not just this building, what has changed in our town. I'm also on, have served on the Ped Bike Advisory Board. We have more cars in this town, driving through this town, and our fire station responds to all of that. Every, everything that's, that's needed with that. That's, that's what our firefighters do. We do have new homes as well as larger homes. So that's just more things that can burn. Like, maybe not more people, but more things that can burn. So more types of materials that go into those buildings that they need to be ready to respond to. There's, this is just a rational response to the changing needs of a town that's changing with all of the communities around it. So I wanted to just share that context. I also wanted to just say, if it seems that there are people tonight who are asking questions and not getting answers, this has been a robust, long process. People have been guided towards the best ways to answer their questions, to get answers timely, and they may or may not be following the suggested course. We have seen many questions before in this process. So I just wanted to share that as well. And everything I'm wearing, you can purchase at Old Navy. I wanted to say that. And also, the, the point about our population aging, our hope is that people can stay in Westwood in their houses as long as they want. They shouldn't have to move somewhere else. So, so the question of where are they going to live? Our hope is that everybody here stays exactly where they are as long as they want. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I already said Old Navy. I think, I think that's it. I just want to thank the, the select board for bringing this to us. I want to thank our firefighters while I have this moment.
20 seconds.
Thank you. Do I get the award thing? You know how on Zoom you get that award sound when your time's up? I want to thank my planning board and I want to welcome the incoming members, Maureen White and Michael DeDarian.
Yeah, please stick to the article.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate that correction. Thank you.
Sir, I, I see you standing over there by the microphone. You'll be third because I, I saw you before the last gentleman.
Hi, Brian Kamaker, 95 University Avenue. You know, other towns that do a fire station, they, they just go ahead and build a fire station. They don't have a huge, you know, PR campaign and an organized, you know, business, you know, bringing people and all of this stuff. I think, as they admitted, they want to have the best fire station they can have that will attract really good people. And during the town officials' push for the $87 million elementary school, as I said earlier, nobody mentioned that this was coming up, even though for the last 10 years, everybody knew that it was coming up. At least the people who work for the city knew that. And that's very disturbing. But I, I would like to look at a similar town, Massachusetts Rockland. They went through the exact same thing. They have a fire station in town that was built in 1939, similar to ours. It was expanded in 1978. We're 16,000 people, Rockland to 17,000 people. In 2023, their select board did exactly the same thing. They pushed this, you know, big fire station project for $33 million, not 38. And the town voted it down. They said this is too, you know, too extravagant, even though it's a bigger town. And so they went back to the drawing board and they came up with a $26 million fire station that did everything that they needed. And that got voted in and they're doing it. And the town isn't going to, you know, burn down because of this. Everybody's happy. I think, you know, we can go back to the drawing board. The, the fire station isn't the library. It's not something that everybody in town goes to. It's a fire station. Just one, one quick thing. The, I, I'm very, a lot of people are upset or the way this vote. The, I'm very, a lot of people are upset are the way this vote has been being taken. We're only given two weeks from tomorrow. Instead of, most people will get, like, most towns give you like three months to vote on an override or a dead exclusion or anything. We get two weeks. There's something very disturbing about that. But I hope you will take Rockland into consideration. You don't need the world's best fire station.
20 seconds.
You can just do something with, you know, what you have. Thank you.
Did I hear a motion to call a question? Is there a second? We have a motion to call a question. To call a question requires a two-thirds vote. I'm now asking you to vote on whether we should end debate and then proceed to Article 14. All in favor of calling a question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. We're now going on to Article 14, which comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission. Again, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
It appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. IC 7, so we're going to take a standing, standing count. Can the counters come up? No, no. And the integrity of the vote. All it takes is one person to lie and say their voting device is not working. So we're going to take a standing count. All those in favor of Article 14, please stand up. The vote, there are 503 votes in favor, 164 votes against. It is a two-thirds vote in favor of the article passes. I hear a motion to reconsider. Is there a second? I hear a second. A motion to reconsider may be done once on an article. If you would like to revote and change your vote, you want to vote against reconsideration. If you're happy with the way vote stands, you...
Other way.
Okay. You reconsider if you're not happy with the vote. Vote in favor of reconsideration. If you are in favor, going to vote against reconsideration. Is there any discussion on the motion to reconsider? All right, once again. There's a motion to reconsider the vote. If you've changed your mind, and, can I, hold on, I'll finish. If you've changed your mind and you would like to now vote against the article, you will vote in favor of reconsideration. If you're satisfied with the vote, you'll vote against reconsideration. Is there any discussion on reconsideration? Please, Deanne, state your name and your address. Are you a registered voter?
Yes. My name's Olivia, 565 Everett. I would like to reconsider because nobody's saying that we shouldn't have a new fire station and fix what's broken and maintain it because our firefighters deserve that because they're there day and night working for us and taking care of our communities. All we're asking is just to lessen the price. Find ways where we can reduce costs and not make such an extravagant, attractive fire station, because that's not what we need. We need something functional and practical. Because we already just built a $90 million school. They're saying more people are coming in, so we need a huge fire station. They're saying more people are coming in, so we need a huge fire station. But at the end of the day, we're gonna have to build another school in addition to that. So we might be spending 30, 40 million on this, but we're gonna have to spend another 90 million soon. And it's just, there's certain aspects that are wastes of space, even in the new school that we just built. They have massive hallways for no reason. And these kids are tiny. Like, they're tiny! And it's huge! And it's not practical for them!
Please hold the pause. You're just eating into her time.
So it's not practical for the young kids, and right now, this isn't gonna be practical for us, for all of us. 'Cause although they brought it down to, broke it down to be $1 a day, that's what they have predicted the fees to be. We already, somebody already asked for a budget report, and they said, "It's not clear yet." So we have the baseline of what it's gonna be in addition to everything else. And they say our home values are gonna go up. Which, yes, they are. But your taxes are gonna go up. So until you're ready to sell, this isn't benefiting you. It's not. So at the end of the day, we need to think logically. We're not denying that they don't need a new fire station. Yeah. But I'm just saying quickly, um, we do need a new fire station, but we don't need one that's almost $40 million. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on reconsideration? I see one hand down here in the back. Please raise your hand so she can see you.
Lynn Vede, 37 Abbey Road. I call the question, Mr. Speaker, on the motion.
It's a little early to call the question, but if nobody else wishes to speak, we can go to the vote. All right, there's a motion to call the question. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say nay.
Nay!
Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Now, we're going in voting on the motion to reconsider. If you are happy with the original vote in favor of the fire station, you want to vote against reconsideration. If you're not happy, you wanna vote in favor, or vote aye for reconsideration. All in favor of reconsideration, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say nay.
Nay!
It appears to be a two-third... It appears to be less than... Sufficient votes. You needed two-thirds, you didn't get it. The motion fails. That is the end of round two. Now, we're going on to Article 15. Articles 15, I believe, is gonna be, involve indefinite postponement, as will Article 16 and 17, so I'm gonna briefly explain indefinite postponement. So Articles 15 is a zoning bylaw. Amendments relative to municipal public safety facilities. It comes before you on the vote of the Finance and Warrant Commission. Yet you so vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. I can now recognize Ms. Cummings from the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Select Board moves to amend the Finance and Warrant Commission's recommendation for Article 15 from a positive recommendation to one that seeks to indefinitely postpone the article.
We have a motion to amend the article. Is there a second? Okay. So first, we have to vote on the motion to amend. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend Article 15 so that you vote in favor of indefinite postponement? Indefinite postponement means that the town not vote in favor of the article, and if indefinite postponement passes, the article is dead. Would anyone like to discuss Article 15? I mean, the motion to amend. Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of the amendment to a recommendation of indefinite postponement, which requires a majority vote, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say nay. It appears to be unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor of indefinite postponement. So the article is dead. Article 16 is a citizen's petition to change the annual town meeting date to the first Sunday of May. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission for indefinite postponement. This requires a majority vote. Would anyone like to discuss Article 16? Mr. Ames? Deanne, can you turn on the mic?
Hello? Is it working? Josh Ames, 52 Greenacre Road. I'd like to move that Article 16 be amended by deleting the main motion and substituting the following language. Should I read that into the record, or should I...
I need it in writing, you gotta present it to me.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah. Indefinite postponement cannot be amended. If you wanna amend the article, you have to vote against indefinite postponement. If indefinite postponement fails, then somebody moves the argument, the article, then you can move to amend the article. Would anyone else like to discuss indefinite postponement of Article 16?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Bob Folsom, 35 Smith Drive. Point of order, we voted to amend Article 15, but did we vote on the amended article? I think we might have missed a step there.
The motion on the floor is the motion from the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town take indefinite postponement on this article.
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay. It's a point of order. We voted in favor of indefinite postponement on Article 15, but we never actually voted on the article.
The amended article.
So the recommendation on Article 15 has been amended to indefinite postponement. All in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 15, please say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say nay.
Nay!
Appears to be a majority vote in favor of indefinite postponement. It is a majority vote of indefinite postponement. My apologies. Now, let's go back to Article 16. Article 16 comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission for indefinite postponement. This requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion of indefinite postponement of Article 16?
Just a question, I guess, Josh Ames, 52 Greenacre Road. The previous article that was, from the Select Board, that was voted to indefinite postponement, the revised language was read in prior to the vote.
Right.
So I'm confused as...
The difference is, on the previous article, the recommendation of FinCom was to approve the article.
Okay.
You can amend that.
Okay.
You cannot amend indefinite postponement.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Folsom, did you wanna speak? Nope. Is there any other discussion on indefinite postponement of Article 16? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of indefinite postponement of Article 16, please say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say nay. It appears to be a majority vote in favor of indefinite postponement. It is a majority vote in favor of indefinite postponement. Turn to Article 17, and on advice of the Town Council, I'm gonna recuse and turn the podium over to Assistant Town Moderator Paul Fitzgerald.
This motion is on a citizen's petition relative to July 2025 yard waste pickup. The motion of the FinCom is that this article be indefinite postponed. Is there any discussion on the motion for indefinite postponement of this article? Mr. Privatara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joe Privatara, 16 Dean Street. I request an indefinite postponement on this article, but I believe credit should be where credits do. I'd like to thank Todd Corchen, our DPW Director, and Brendan Ryan, who do an outstanding job and got this negotiated into the next trash pickup. So thank you, Todd. Thank you, Brendan. Please vote indefinite postponement.
Any further discussion on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Seeing none, I will call the vote. This requires a majority vote. All in favor of the indefinite postponement of Article 17 on the warrant, say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, say nay. It appears to be unanimous vote in favor of indefinite postponement. It is a vote for indefinite postponement.
We're now on to Article 18, which is the Home Rule Petition. An act to file a petition for state legislation to amend the town charter. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This vote requires a two-thirds vote. And I'm gonna turn discussion over to Paul Fitzgerald, who's gonna present the article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Fitzgerald, 149 Birch Tree Lane. I had the honor to be the co-chair of the Charter Committee with Mr. Peter Cahill. And I say it was an honor for the following reason. I was able to serve with five citizens and two ex-officio members, people who have given years of service to this town, not only as elected and appointed board members, but as coaches in youth sports, as leaders in their church and other religious communities, as people who have volunteered for all kinds of community events, including the Community Chest. And I, every meeting, I was struck by the commitment that my colleagues on the committee have to this town and their overwhelming desire to have Westwood be the best community possible. So that's why I say it was an honor to chair this committee. When we set out, our only goal was threefold. One was to clear up the language in the charter. Some of it was archaic. Some of it referenced laws that no longer exist. Our goal was to have a charter that any citizen of Westwood could pick up, read, and understand. So that was our first goal, to make it understandable to the citizens who are governed by that charter. Our second goal was to codify best practices. In the 10 years since the charter was last reviewed, many best practices have been adopted to the town to make the town more effective, more efficient. We wanted to codify those best practices so they are in the charter and will continue to be the policy of the town. Our last goal was to protect and enhance the integrity of those institutions that make Westwood what it is. Most importantly, the town meeting, where everyone who sits in these chairs has an equal vote and an equal voice. And we wanted to protect the integrity of that town meeting. We want to protect the integrity of all of the boards and commissions that are elected and appointed. And I believe that we accomplished that goal. I recommend this charter to you because it is the sincere belief of the people that I had the honor to serve with that this charter will make Westwood an even stronger community, that it will enable us to continue to function effectively, efficiently, and it can be a town that we are all proud of. I sincerely recommend this charter to you. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on Article 18? Oh, there's a video? Okay, I'm sorry, there's a video.
Good evening. I'm Paul Fitzgerald, co-chair of Westwood's Charter Review Committee, here with Nancy Hyde, one of the committee's five members. We are here to provide a brief overview of Article 18, which contains recommended changes to the town's charter. The charter is the foundational document of the town's government. It defines both the organizational structure and essential functions of the town's elected and appointed officials, boards, and committees. The town undertakes a full review of the charter every 10 years. You can find the proposed changes to the charter in Appendix F, starting on page 84 in the warrant book.
Article 18, if passed, will grant the town permission to submit a Home Rule Petition to the state legislature, requesting approval of the recommended revisions to the town's charter. These recommendations come after a thorough review process by the Charter Review Committee, which consists of five Westwood residents, two ex-officio members from town staff, and legal counsel specializing in municipal law. The Charter Review Committee held numerous meetings, engaged with many elected and appointed officials, and actively sought public input. Drop-in sessions were also held at the library this past January and February to provide residents with a direct opportunity to speak with committee members.
We believe the proposed changes can be characterized as either substantive, technical, or housekeeping. As an example of a substantive change, the Permanent Building Commission will now include a school committee member for all school building projects. And the thresholds for referring a project to the Permanent Building Commission for Oversight will be increased from $100,000 to $1 million. An example of a technical change is the clarification that a person duly elected at the annual town election in April shall take office after the dissolution of town meeting. We thank you for your time and respectfully ask for your support of Article 18.
Is this working? Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Kamaker, 95 University Avenue. This should really be two articles, not one, I believe. It, the first thing that it does is, as the speaker said, is it cleans up a lot of the language, which really needed to be cleaned up. I mean, I don't know who wrote it originally, but they did a very good job of cleaning up the language and making things more readable. However, there's another thing which they didn't really cover here, which is very disturbing. And that is their change in the way the town meeting itself works. They do two things which I'm very alarmed about. First of all, it does away with the quorum in the town meeting after it starts. Now, I feel somewhat responsible for that personally because you may recall, a few years ago, late in the meeting, I called the quorum. And I had counted the people, they weren't enough there. And I was told that I was out of order, but the meeting went on, and I wrote a letter to the Select Board about that. But the ability to keep a town meeting going with maybe four or five, or just a handful of people, is not a good, it's not good government. The other thing that it does is it allows the Select Board to call a town meeting with almost no notice at any time. That is very bad. You may recall that when they passed this fire station thing, they called a special town meeting in the middle of the winter, late at, uh, it went late at night. And they were able to just do what they did tonight, bring in all of their friends, and it just went through. And there was very little notice then. It's, it's just bad government. I went to one of the meetings, and I spoke with Mr. Fitzgerald and the town attorney. And, you know, I, I think that they are acting in good faith. I, I think that they're, they're just, I just disagree with them. Their reasons were that not enough people are coming. And my reason is, my... Their reasons were that not enough people are coming, and my reason is, my response to that is, well, one of the reasons that people don't come is that this book is so complicated, most people who get it can't understand what they're coming for, and they need to be much, if they sold...
20 seconds.
Okay. If they sold this like they sold the fire station, they'd fill the hall every time. I would say vote no on this, go back to the drawing board to do it right. Thank you.
I saw you fourth, so we'll see, recognize these two women, then I'll recognize you and the gentleman behind you.
Tall people. Serena Barclay, 15 Cardinal Drive. I absolutely agree, the charter needed cleaning up, did an excellent job, but I also do believe that the quorum issue should be separately considered. I think what everybody saw here today is that our town can be passionate and engaged and wants their voices to be heard, but unfortunately, town business is long and arduous, and while the intention of this vote on changing the quorum rules is not to have gamesmanship, the result will be for that. The people of the town do not have a say in when certain articles are placed on an agenda with the order that it will be, and it can lead to pushing hotter button items to later in the agenda, and that's not what anybody wants, because everybody's voices should be heard, and although that's not the intention, that could be the result. And in the materials, FinCom did have three dissenting voices, and I think that's notable, that when FinCom spends time looking at this, the fact that three members dissented on this, I think is notable and should be considered. And finally, in the materials, it stated that one of the reasons they're doing this is because there's low attendance here. Low attendance comes from disengagement and disenfranchisement, and for people who come and get a babysitter, leave work early, hold off on dinner, to come to part of the meeting and then have to leave because there's 30 things on there, and the thing that mattered to them didn't get voted on, that's going to lead to even more disenfranchisement and disengagement in our community, not more. You're not going to get more people sitting here if they show up and then have to leave because they can't stay long enough. Thank you.
We're doing great, folks. We're going to get done tonight. I ask you to hold your applause.
Nada Milasavjevic Fabrizio, 32 Webster Street. I agree with the previous two speakers that changing the quorum is a dangerous precedent to set, and I agree that it needs to be...
Ms. Fabrizio, please hold that close to your mouth.
Sorry.
If you move, we can't hear you.
Changing the quorum is a dangerous precedent, I think, and I think I agree with the other two speakers that this article should have been divided into separate articles and not combined in one. And my question to the Charter Review Committee is, why did not they take up the issue of changing town meeting to a Saturday or a Sunday, where more people can attend and will bring their children because they don't have school the next day? So, I'd appreciate it, because there was a citizen's petition to change the date of town meeting, and it was taken off of indefinite postponement because it was a charter change. So, that would have been the responsibility of the Charter Review Committee to take up that issue, and I want to know, I'm very, very curious, why through the moderator, the Charter Review Committee did not take up the issue of changing the date of town meeting to a weekend?
Paul Fitzgerald, 149 Birch Tree Drive. We did consider it. We considered the charter in its entirety. We did not want to recommend changes that we didn't feel were in the best interest of the town. I'm not convinced that a town meeting on a Sunday night is the best thing, because I know lots of families on Sunday nights who have a lot of things that they're trying to take care of to get today started. So, to suggest that we didn't consider it is simply not accurate. And I also would like to point out that another misstatement, it was said that the Charter Commission, the new charter would allow the town board of selectmen to call a special town meeting at any time. I would point you to the existing charter, Section 261. It says in there, "The board's decision as to whether to hold a fall town meeting shall not prohibit the board from calling a special town meeting at a discretion." We did not change one aspect of that. It's the charter that we have now reads the same as the charter that we have, the charter we're recommending reads the same as the charter that we have now. And I just want to say, I'll point out one other thing. The Charter Commission did not recommend the change in the quorum because we thought there was not enough participation at town meeting. That was not the Charter Commission's view of it. The FinCom may have taken that view, but that was not the Charter Commission's view. Our desire was to protect and enhance the integrity of the town meeting. Gamesmanship is one of the things that we were seeking to eliminate. What we did not want to have happen was to have an important article at the end of the meeting that most people attending the town meeting who stayed, who participate, who informed themselves, want to support something, and one individual or two individuals would get up and question a quorum.
Keep it to the answer, answer the question. You're going beyond that. Ms. Fabrizio, I'll give you another minute.
Through the moderator, please. I'm not suggesting a Sunday night. I'm suggesting other municipalities in this state have town meeting on a Saturday morning outdoors under a tent at 10:00 a.m., and I don't understand why we can't do that. And if someone says that it costs a lot of money, look at our budget, how much money. We have multimillion dollars, and to say that possibly outdoors under a tent is too expensive is just outrageous.
All right, now we're going to go to the two gentlemen over here, and we'll come back to Mr. Mullin.
Hello. Peter Shuler, 779 Gay Street. I'm opposed to Article 18 for the one reason being the change in the quorum requirement. I believe it's very important to maintain the quorum that currently is in place, and for that, if the town leadership wants to keep the voters engaged and enthusiastic about participating, they should find other ways to keep the voters involved than to just simply allow a change in the quorum, to allow votes later on in the meeting to take place with fewer people present. Thank you.
Sir?
Good evening. My name is Brian Clinton. I live at 44 Baker Street, Westwood. I just wanted to, when I saw this article, I come from a former background in government for nearly 20 years, and I just felt compelled to stand up and tell our elected leaders and our boards, this is terrible precedent, not good government, this charter, proposed charter change. It will discourage participation even further, and I would suggest that maybe the Charter Committee take up something like a Home Rule Petition to the legislature where the people in Westwood can vote from home, like they conduct all their meetings online now. You have not given up the, you have not given up the opportunity to continue to Zoom. You don't meet in person as regularly as you used to. The zoning board meets onboard and takes votes online. I don't understand why the town meeting can't do it. I just think it's really poor government, and I strongly urge those still here in attendance, my fellow town committee members, meeting members, to vote no on this.
Mr. Mullin? Not yet.
Hello. Anthony Mullin, 126 Pond. I'd like to propose an amendment to basically keep the language the same on the quorum as is in the existing piece. It seems like that's the one, the work of the commission has been amazing, there's been a lot of improvements. I think if we just strike, keep the existing language requiring the quorum, that's my proposed amendment. I think you have a copy of it?
Is there a second to the motion? All right. I have a copy of it. The amendment reads, "The amendment is to retain the current language in the town charter for Section 8 under Chapter 2 of Town Charter, open parentheses, 2 hyphen 8 hyphen 1, close parentheses, so that it reads, 'The town meeting shall establish by town by law a quorum requirement for the conduct of its business, but a smaller number than the established quorum may adjourn immediately any meeting to a stated date, time, and place.'" So, as I understand it, the motion is to delete that part of this article, which would propose to amend the quorum provision.
Exactly. It's the existing language.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor. Now, we discuss whether the article should be so amended. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend Article 18? A motion to amend requires a majority vote. All in favor of so amending Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Appears to be a majority vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Now, we go back to Article 18 as amended. All the other changes are as stated, except for the provision regarding the quorum. Any discussion? Mr. Beck.
Kevin Becker, 1227 High Street. It's a question first. Is there a stipulation in our charter currently that allows for citizens to call a special town meeting? I don't see it in here.
I will defer to town council to answer that question.
There used to be, certainly. I was involved with one where, at one time, we had, if 200 citizens signed a petition, we could have a special town meeting. The only thing in here says that the Select Board can call a special town meeting. It doesn't say anything about citizens.
So, I believe, I can recall that situation where 200 citizens called for a special town meeting. I don't have it memorized, but I'm...
Give it to you. I have it.
You got it?
It's in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Give me a second.
Yeah, so there is provisions for citizens who want to do something to call for a special town meeting. We'll give you a site in a second.
Yes, here it is, Pat.
In the bylaws, Section 138.7, as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10, 200 registered voters may petition the selectmen to call a special town meeting. 100 registered voters may insert an article in a warrant for any special town meeting, and 10 registered voters may insert an article for the annual town meeting.
Okay, so that's in place regardless of what happened?
No matter what, we vote tonight.
Thank you.
So, this article only amends the charter, not the bylaw, which is called the code. Ms. Schwartz?
I've got a question. My name is Marleus Schwartz, and I live at 32 Westwood Glen. I just got my copy of the warrant on Saturday, which was a short time to read and consider all of this, so I was wondering if we could postpone this article until the winter, fall meeting?
The motion to postpone an article is out of order. You can ask people to vote against it, but you cannot on town meeting floor ask for indefinite postponement.
I didn't know if it was out of order or...
Did I hear motion to call a question? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of calling a question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. Now, we go on to Article 18. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 18 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. But now, we go on to Article 19. Local option acceptance of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 203, cap C, the prudent investor rule. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that you so vote. This vote requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 19? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 19, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Appears to be a majority vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 20, to accept clause 22, cap J, under the HERO Act, Veterans Local Option. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that you so vote. This article requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 20? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 21, to accept Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 41B, payments of public employees by direct bank credits, and in parentheses, direct deposit. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 21? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 22, construction easement, Conant Road Culvert Project. Comes before you on the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. Because it involves an interest in real estate, it requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 22? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 23, construction easement, Conant Road Culvert Project. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 23? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 23, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 24, the Home Two Hotel Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, agreement. Slide. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This vote requires a majority vote. Is there any discussion on Article 24? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor of Article 24, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Appears to be a majority vote in favor. It is a majority vote in favor. Article 25, Chapter 138, Section 15, All Alcohol License. Slide. You're not going to get the whole slide on that. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 25?
Ms. Galcosi. Thank you. Claire Galcosi, 320 Dover Road. I have a concern, I feel that we have an opportunity here to nip a problem in the bud. Allowing the sale of alcoholic nips will add to our already troublesome nip litter problem, which is pervasive throughout the state, by making purchasing them much more convenient, potentially. I walk on Dover Road, pick up litter, I'm always picking up nips before they wash into the brook or the storm drains, and that suggests that they're being consumed while people are driving. It's also a lot cheaper to buy nips than the little bottles of vanilla extract that I frequently pick up as well, that are, you know, obviously purchased by underage teenagers, which have high alcohol content. I'm not sure why they're not regulated as alcoholic beverages themselves, but the nip bottles, which are 1.7 ounces, are too small for our recycling facilities to sort, and they contribute to our contamination rate, which has been a potential problem regarding surcharges. regarding surcharges. Many towns in Massachusetts have tried to ban nip bottles, nip sales, because of these reasons, but few have succeeded because of...
I'm sorry, Ms., are you moving to amend the article?
I am moving to amend the article. You want me to get started with that?
Is there a mo... We have a motion to amend the article. Is there a second? Okay. I have the written amendment. I'd like it to read it to you.
I've actually amended the amendment. Strike eight ounces and make it three point five.
You can't... I asked you to submit the writings in advance. You can't do it now.
Oh, okay.
I can go with what you submitted to me yesterday.
Okay.
All right. You can't interrupt the speaker with the call of a quorum. So the amendment is, would be on page thirty-two of your book, and would add the phrase on line two. If you look at your book, she's proposing that add language in containers that hold a minimum of eight fluid ounces. We have a second. Now, I... Somebody's called the quorum. We have to determine... Beg your pardon? Page thirty-two. Article twenty-five, section one, line two. Did I hear a call of the quorum? Okay. We're going to need to do a count on the quorum.
Before we vote on the amendment, can I finish my comments?
No. Call of a quorum, we've got to determine that right now. It's a privileged motion. So I don't... You don't need to stand. We'll just have the counters count. We need one hundred and seventy-five. We could try the clickers. That doesn't mean everybody's going to vote, but if you're here, vote yes. If you're not here, vote no. Not everybody has a clicker? Everybody turn them... Okay. Resume the count. Ms. Galkowski, don't go too far. Yeah, well, we'll just finish it. John, when you get to one seventy-five, stop. All right, we have a quorum. So now before you, we have a motion to amend the article. We have to vote on the amendment first before we address the article.
May I finish my comments before the vote?
Yes, you may. Yes, you may. I just want to make sure everybody's clear.
I'm almost done. Our leaders have told me that some, a couple of our leaders in town have told me that addressing it in regulation would be more appropriate, but being risk averse, I'm not sure I want to take that chance. Nips are typically one point seven ounces. I'll just submit the motion to extend, so that's all.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Town Council's going to speak.
Patterhorn, one oh three Church Street, Town Council. I actually agree with Ms. Galkowski that I'd like to see eight ounces as the minimum sale, but I don't think we should do it through legislation. We have some of the toughest... We've only been a wet town since the early two thousands. Okay, before that, we were a dry town. We have some of the strictest alcohol regulations in the state. We have minimal problems with our alcohol sales. I think the proper place to address this is not trying to tell the legislature what section fifteen should say or shouldn't say. It lets the liquor lobby get involved. It lets everything get involved. I think we keep it within our own jurisdiction with our own regulation, and I think that's the proper way to manage it. I understand you're risk averse, but I will be, if you let us do it through regulation, I'll be standing next to you, trying to advocate for this. So that's my position.
All right, we've got two women here, and then I see Mr. Walsh in the back.
Hi. Maria Constantini, fifteenth Spelman Road. These nips are a big environmental problem. We, as a town, can make the decision that we don't want them. We already give them the alcohol license. That's pretty generous, anyway, and we set our parameters for what we want in our town. These nips last forever. They are everywhere. They cannot be recycled, and we continue to add to add the plastic world. Plastics everywhere. I think we have an opportunity to set some limits, what we want and don't want in our town.
Eileen Siegel, two fifty-seven Alder Road. I actually want to speak in favor of this. I mean, Roche Brothers and Wegmans have a history of successfully selling beer and wine. This makes our community more competitive. They've had no issues, and I just think this makes sense.
Mr. Walsh.
There we are. Thank you, Mr. Maroya. I actually am voting against this, and I'll tell you, I was a former select board member for nine years, and every year, they would try to bring this in front of us, and I was one of the voices that said no. My problem with this is it's only twenty thousand square feet facilities that get to offer this. I have been a promoter of small businesses my entire life, because I run a small business, and it just gives a big disadvantage to the people, the groups...
Mr. Walsh, we're talking about the amendment, not the article yet.
Okay. Well, I'll just finish this and say, so I'm voting against it regardless of the amendment. Regardless, I'll ask you to vote against it because it puts small business against big business, and that's unfair in Westwood. Thank you.
Angeli Kavins, three sixty-five Dover Road. As someone who picks up litter around town throughout the year, I'm in favor of this amendment. We can help keep Westwood and surrounding towns beautiful by not selling nips to begin with, so please vote in favor of not having nips. Thanks.
Brian Kamakur, ninety-five University Avenue. Yeah, I would say go with the amendment. Generally, I know there's some concerns about the legislature, but the way, I mean, the way this is generally handed by the legislature, it's through an informal session where almost nobody even reads these things. They just whip through with one or two reps and senators. And years ago, when there was a problem with liquor licenses, our state rep, McMurtry, got involved and made it happen. So I would say just go for it.
All right, I just want to clarify the amendment in response to the point of order the gentleman made, which is a good one. If you turn to page thirty-two. Article twenty-five, the second paragraph, or the first full paragraph from the bottom, section one. She's proposing, after the language on line two that says sale of all alcoholic beverages, to add the further provision that it be in containers that hold a minimum of eight fluid ounces. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Sir?
Yes, is this on?
It's on. I'm looking at you.
Tom Bachhorst, one five four Church Street. I'm actually, have a question more. I'm curious to hear a little bit more from Town Council as to what he's referring to when he says doing it through the legislature allows the liquor lobby to get involved in this. I'm not sure I understand whether what he's saying is that whatever we vote could simply get reversed by the state legislature, and so I'd like to understand what he was referring to.
So this is a home rule petition. Home rule petitions are generally done at the end of a legislative session, in informal sessions. The last time we had to, we went to the legislature, we got involved in a terrible brouhaha because Canton was trying to prevent University Station from coming, and we ended up having to have a special town meeting. I don't... The liquor lobby is a very strong lobby in the Commonwealth. They managed to prevent, and there's a lot of money. Having worked in a liquor store in college, there's a lot of money in nips and quarter pints. Ms. Galkowski is right. They end up on the street. I don't want, I don't want the legislature to hold up through, so in informal session, one member can call the session off. I don't want to end up in that kind of cycle. I want to do it in Westwood through our own alcohol regs that we are very diligent about, and it would allow it a smoother passage through Boston, in my opinion, having seen it several times. That's my point. We can do it ourselves. We don't need Boston to interfere in our, in how we want to manage our alcohol program. And I'm sorry, just before you ask, I put a lifesaver in, so...
Thank you.
Do I get a motion to call a question? Is there a second? All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry. Motion to call a question goes to immediate vote. We're going to do that again. I'm glad we had professionals here, and unless... I'm not going to call the question until the professionals tell me everything is safe. Okay. All in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to amend requires a majority vote. It's a majority vote. Okay, right, that's right. Now we're voting on the amendment. The amendment requires a majority vote. All in favor of the motion to amend Article twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Does not appear to be a majority vote in favor. It is not a majority vote in favor, the motion to amend fails. We're now going back to Article twenty-five. Is there any discussion on Article twenty-five? Hearing none, seeing none, we're now going to vote on Article twenty-five. This requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article twenty-five, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'm in doubt. We're going to have to do a standing count. All right. Do we have the long count, long counters? All in favor of Article twenty-five, please stand. Those in favor may sit. Those opposed to Article twenty-five, please stand. One hundred and sixty-two votes in favor, eighty votes against. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. That's the end of round four. We now go on to the planning board articles, and we're going to get a report from the Whenever you're ready, Ms. Lott.
Sure. Oh, good, it's on. The planning board unanimously recommends Articles 26 through 32, and asks that the town so vote. We are happy to answer questions during discussion.
We now move on to the planning board articles. Article 26, zoning bylaw amendments relative to assisted living residences in nursing or convalescent homes. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. So is there discussion on Article 26?
John Samp, 89 Lake Shore Drive. One quick question on 26. I don't understand what this is all about with all the acronyms. Is the effect of this to make the nursing homes commercial properties?
Thank you for that question. No. The zoning change would only apply to the ARO district, which really is only a couple of properties in Westwood. It wouldn't eliminate the ability to build a nursing home or assisted living facility in either of those properties. It would just bring the density requirements in line with the other allowed use, which is resident...the other currently allowed residential use in those properties currently...which is...for assist...sorry. Age-restricted housing has a density limit. Convalescent home, assisted living does not. So we're bringing that in line so that they're consistent across the three currently allowed residential uses. There are also commercial uses allowed in those areas. In fact, one of the properties, the Meditech East property over on East Street, is currently only being used as a commercial use.
Is there any other discussion on Article 26? All in favor of Article 26, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Moving on to Articles 27, zoning bylaw amendments relative to flood area overlay district. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote, and this article requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 27? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of Article 27, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Appears to be unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 28, zoning bylaw amendments relative to accessory apartments. Excuse me. My voice is changing. This comes before you on the motion of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 28? We can get your microphone.
Thank you.
And the gentleman in front, did you want to speak as well after him? Okay.
Jason Kitayama, 69 Sycamore Drive.
I'm sorry, give your name again.
Yeah, Jason Kitayama.
Okay.
69 Sycamore Drive. My opposition to this particular amendment is the striking of special permit needed for the construction of these apartments. I clearly missed the vote for the original amendment that allowed this within the town, but as many of you know, we're talking about all the resource strains that happen within the town, about the fire station, about the schools. Bringing in more rental properties, of course, increases our population without increasing our tax base, puts more of a weight on the resources that are available within town, and creates...changes sort of the commitment that people have to the town by bringing in a more transient population here. All for more people living in the town. I think we should be as inclusive as possible. I don't think everyone popping up three-floor apartments in their backyard is the way to do that. I don't need all my time.
Okay. And the gentleman, Anne, right off to Anne, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Volpe. I live at 26 Delapa Circle. I think many of us moved to Westwood because it's a charming, pretty rural town, and what this does is make it possible for most people in town to start building apartments in their backyard. I don't want a bunch of apartments in my backyard. I want my neighbors to start to put up apartments. This, at least my reading of this, it's complicated, and there's a lot of legal language in there, but that people would not need a permit or any approvals or whatever if they're building things within regulation to start popping up apartments in my backyard just over the line. And they would need a permit to put a second one there, but that would also be permitted under this. It just seems like we're trying to change Westwood into something it's not. We have a lot of resource constraints. There are a lot of concerns about our budget going forward. We're going to already need to rebuild the Thurston School, probably the Sheehan School. We're building a new fire station. All these things are raising our taxes, and you're talking about adding a lot of people into the town, but only increasing the tax base a very, very small amount because you're going to have these small apartments, you're going to have a lot more students in our schools, you're going to have a lot more demand on fire and police and things like that, and it's really going to break the town...
You're getting a little close to discriminatory language. Be careful what you say.
Because there's lots more people moving into apartments, and those...I'm just saying that those apartments...
And families, and...just be very careful.
I'm just saying that financially, when you add an apartment to a single-family dwelling, the amount...if our average home is currently worth 1.2 million, we talked about that earlier, most of these apartments that you're going to be building are going to be below that. So it's going to add less than the average amount to the tax base, and we're going to be having a lot more demand on all of our town services. In addition to that, it is completely changing the character of the town, and I don't think any of us moved here to, you know, if you want to live in a place that has lots of apartments all over the place, there's other places for that. I think we all moved to Westwood because it's a charming rural town that we all love, and I just really think this majorly changes the town in a gigantic way. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seagull, and then Mr. Campion.
Hi, Eileen Seagull, 257 Alder Road. And I just want to say, I'm feeling really sad right now hearing that this is what was jumped to. I have a seven...and an 81-year-old father, and this...something I'm thinking about right now is putting something onto my house so I can have my parents with me and near me, and they don't have to go somewhere else and be alone. So it makes me kind of sad that that's not one of the things that is considered by people, and it's more...it just never occurred to me that anybody would go to saying, building three-story apartments in backyards and changing the town and all those things. Because where I'm coming from, thinking about being able to put something with my home where I have an acre of land so that my parents could be with me, people I love, that raised me, took care of me, that love their granddaughter, that should be with their family, this makes it very easy for me. So I'm really hoping everybody can please shift their lens, and don't just think about it in a singular way of thinking of like three-story apartment building in backyards. Please think about this as well as families being able to be with each other and also being able to have their independence.
Can we get a microphone to Mr. Campion in the back? You have one, okay. And then I see a gentleman over here.
Jim. Mr. Moderator. At some point, could I address some of the questions over here?
Oh, okay.
I actually can probably clarify a few things if that's...
Sure.
Whenever it's in order.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I would just like to clarify a couple of things. One, the state has changed the law that we are no longer allowed to make one ADU, accessory dwelling unit, discretionary, meaning we're not allowed to say you have to get a special permit to do it, or we have to remove that 2% of the total housing units cap that has been legislated by the state. So that is the impetus for us making this change to our current bylaws. To clarify about, it's not an apartment building in the backyard. We're talking about an accessory dwelling unit, kind of like what Ms. Seagull was referring to. There are still dimensional requirements. They must be under 900 square feet. They still must conform to the setbacks in the particular zoning districts, so this is not a completely unregulated free-for-all. It's one accessory dwelling unit per home by right, per single-family home by right, and this is mandated by the state that we are no longer allowed to impose any kind of discretionary rules on that. I hope that's helpful.
The requirement, or it says the removal of the owner occupancy requirement...
Please state your name and your address.
Oh, excuse me. Jack Campion, 6 Brookfield Grove. This says it would remove the owner occupancy requirement. Is that referring to the owner of the...of the property so that the property can be occupied by tenants completely? Meaning the main dwelling as well as the auxiliary unit?
Okay, we have someone to answer that.
Or does anybody on the property have to be an owner?
Good evening, everyone. Elijah Romulus, Town Planner. So the proposed owner occupancy requirement that has been lifted from this is state-mandated, so whether it's the primary residence or the accessory dwelling unit, there is that removal of the owner occupancy. Again, I just wanted to reiterate that this has been set by the state. It went into effect February 2nd, so currently they are by right for one ADU, and so us proposing this bylaw is that we are able to, at least to some level, regulate it. There is the review for building permits and certificates of occupancy for these proposed accessory dwelling units, so there is that level of oversight from the Building Division as well as the Associated Land Use Departments to look at these proposed units. And I just want to say that three-level ADUs are the farthest thing from the truth. They are, again, 900-square-feet units, and I hope that answers some of those questions.
Okay. I have 52 seconds left. So with respect to restrictions at all, are there occupancy restrictions that would be enforceable? Meaning number of occupants in the dwelling, in the auxiliary dwelling?
Amanda Wolf, Housing and Land Use Planner. I just want to clarify that with this law passing, essentially ADUs became a protected use, just like educational uses and religious uses, so it's essentially another Dover Amendment protection. With that law, we were given regulations that were finalized in January that outlined what we could and couldn't do. Essentially, if it's not regulated on single-family homes, we cannot regulate it on ADUs. The law comes...is in effect regardless of what we change. Like Elijah said, this just allows us to have some review on the process that's still consistent with the regulations.
Over here on the left, my left.
Brian Clinton, again, 44 Baker Street. I have a specific question relative to Section 8.5. Are these ADUs required to have their own sewer and electric meters individualized? You know what I mean? They can't be kind of sucking power and water off of the existing home? It's in Article 5. And then just one comment. I find it a little rich that you were telling somebody to curb their language, you know, having listened all night. I just would mention to the moderator, there were some remarks earlier tonight that people weren't proud of you.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Just certain words, discriminatory, under fair housing standards. That's my only concern. You can be critical of me, I can take it.
Yes, so just want to reiterate the fair housing federal law as it relates to discriminatory language, and so the moderator was making that as point of order. For the utilities, there is a provision that will allow the utility companies to review at their need for the connections because they are also in the process of evaluating this new bylaw that is mandated from the state, which has just been enacted within the last few months, and so there is some moving language with that.
I hear a motion to call a question. Is there a second? All in favor of calling the question, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Appears to be unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favors. We are now voting on Article 28, which requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article 28, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Article 29, zoning bylaw amendments relative to major business development. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 29? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of Article 29, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Appears to be a two-thirds vote in favor. It is a two-thirds vote in favor. Three more to go. Article 30, zoning bylaw, indoor zoning map amendments relative to underlying zoning district designation of parcel on Providence Highway. That's a mouthful. Slide? Thank you. Comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any discussion on Article 30? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor of Article 30, say aye. All opposed, say nay. It appears to be unanimous vote in favor. It is a unanimous vote in favor. Article 31, zoning bylaw amendments relative to affordable housing. This comes before you on the recommendation of the Finance and Warrant Commission that the town so vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. No, we're not going to move the question yet. Still discussion. Mr. Cammer.
Thank you, Brian Cammer, 95 University Avenue. It's somewhat ironic that here in the meeting, we've put most of our energy into making housing more expensive, yet at the end, we have a bylaw, a zoning bylaw on affordable housing. But if I...this is somewhat complicated, so I hope that I got it right. What it appears to do is require landlords of apartment buildings to have 15% of their units at below-market rates. Now, that is, you know, it's something, you know, I think that it's...it doesn't do what people really want it to do. I think it's misguided. First of all, it doesn't really help the people here in Westwood. What it tends to do is help people from out of town come in and occupy below-market units. It's not fair to the landlords because they have to offer these at below-market rates, and what they do is they raise the rates for the rest of the people to make up for it. It just, you know, as I said, it helps people from out of town, and it tends not to help people from in-town, and it's just not fair. I would suggest a different approach to affordable housing. Maybe not zoning these gigantic lots...